Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting to order. It is 6:05, and I would ask that, given the size of the crowd tonight, I think we should do introductions, and if my colleagues would share whether they're on the Finance Committee or not. I'll go ahead and start. My name is Jennifer Dill, and I'm the Chair of the Finance and Personnel Committee, District One Representative.
My name is Anna Power-Rokowski. I am also a student on the Finance Committee.
I'm Anna Travarro. I'm the Chair of the Board, and I'm not on the Finance Committee.
Tim Atkinson, Board Member, not on the Finance Committee.
Hi, I'm Mark Balfonts. I'm an at-large member on the School Board, and I'm also on the Finance Committee.
My name is Roberto Rodriguez. I'm an at-large member of the School Board and member of the Finance Committee as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marnie Morioli. I represent District Five, and I'm not on the Finance Committee.
And I'm Sarah Thompson, School Board at Large, and I am not on the Finance Committee. Thank you.
I'm Alicia Gardner, the Executive Director of Budget and Finance for the Portland Public Schools.
And I'm Javier Baltana, the Superintendent.
So we are missing one of our colleagues right at the moment, but she is on her way. I do want to put out there for the -- just to let folks know on the agenda for tonight's meeting, the Finance Committee has made additional requests on the Superintendent's budget, as well as proposed, asked the Superintendent to look at proposals to reduce the impact, the tax rate impact, to 4.5 percent. So we're going to look at those tonight. We are not going to be voting on a budget tonight. I just want to clarify that, because I know that others have been saying that there is a vote, there is not. We do have a meeting on Friday where we are scheduled to take that vote, but I think that it's more important for us as public servants to hear from the public and get your feedback on the proposals that were -- that are in front of us. So I'm going to let the Superintendent start us off with the review for requested documents.
And I'm actually going to pass it off to Alicia.
Okay, much of this is due to questions that we received from members on the Finance Committee or members that we received from the City Finance Committee when we had a joint meeting last Thursday. So the first document we're going to look at talks about the JMG enrollment in each class. Sorry, this is Jobs for Maine Graduates. Do you want to talk about what that is?
Jobs for Maine Graduate, as the Finance Committee knows, I believe, is an organization that is national, that it's at the national level. It's Jobs for Americas -- Jobs for Americas -- what does the G stand for?
Graduates.
Graduates, sorry. And they are very well-regarded, and they're very well-established in Portland, have been here for a number of years, and I believe it was Member Davis that asked for how many students are actually served in the JMG program at Portland and Deering, and so that's what you have there.
So just to clarify, this -- Deering currently serves 50 students. There's 18 seniors and 32 underclassmen, and Portland also serves 50 students, 22 seniors and 28 underclassmen. And there's just a little bit more information from the Chief Strategy Officer at JMG. In the electronic packet, which will be available online this evening, there are letters of support from members --
Multiple stakeholders.
From many stakeholders in the program, so these are all going to be available posted online. They're not in the packet that we handed out tonight. So this next section that we're going to talk about, these are numbers that we've talked about previously. These are comparative per pupil spending with other districts. So one thing that looks a little bit different than what we've handed out previously is we've added Yarmouth, Bitterford, Bangor, and Lewiston at the request of some of the city councillors that wanted to see other municipal school districts with a larger city budget, so we added Bitterford, Bangor, and Lewiston. Westbrook was already in there. We also added Yarmouth to the mix to show the overall student spending there. I do want to point out that this is sorted by percentage of the overall tax rate that's applicable to the school. You've seen it in the past where we've been sorting by the spending per pupil, so just so everyone knows how this is sorted. So Portland is approximately a 50-50 split, as is Bitterford. Westbrook is close, and then we've also provided Bangor and Lewiston as the other two very large cities in the state of Maine. So these same districts we're using as comps throughout this next section. So this next section is enrollment from 2008 to 2017. This is information that was provided to the Finance Committee on, I believe, the 19th. The same information was provided, but again, we wanted to make sure that we're including all the districts that we are using as comps throughout this presentation tonight. So you can see over on the far right, there's the enrollment change from 2008 to 2017, and the percentage change for that same period of time. So I'll just point out, Portland has a 3 percent reduction from '08 to '17, the highest being Scarborough's at over 12 percent, and then on the flip side, Lewiston has seen the highest increase in enrollment at about 15 percent over that same time period. So again, this is information that we handed out. It comes from the MEA Salary Benchmarks. I will just say again, these are only the comps that we're using today. This does not mean there's not other districts that would be higher or lower than any of these items, so we sorted the top section by the lowest starting scale, and the bottom section by the highest high point in the scale. Again, this is information we've seen in the past. We just wanted to use the comparison districts. So this next section just looks at how many elementary school buildings are in each district. So Bangor has seven, and we then looked at the state information where they list the enrollment of pre-K through grade five students, and then we just divided them out by the number of elementary schools. That obviously does not mean that's the exact capacity in each school, but it gives an estimate for each school.
And again, this is to answer the question about whether our schools are undersized in comparison to other districts.
So you'll see that Bangor has one of the lowest students-per-school ratios, and obviously Cape Elizabeth and Falmouth have the highest, as they only have one large elementary school building. So this next section, and there's a number of pages here, and I'm not going to get into specifically all the information included here, but these are numbers pulled from the Department of Education. The earliest -- actually, excuse me, the latest information we have is from FY 2016, so it's a couple of years old at this point, but that's the latest they have available. And it takes the state spending categories for each school and lists out what those were, and then I take the number of pupils reported for that same year and did a total spending per pupil, just so we can tie it back to the Department of Education that's keeping everything sort of apples-to-apples. And then the DOE has on their website a per-pupil spending that takes out transportation and debt, so I included that here. One of the differences between this column right here, this per-pupil spending, and the DOE per-pupil spending is they use something that's called net operating expenses, which includes some revenues in and out. So it becomes a little bit more complicated, but they're fairly comparable. So there's a number of slides that has all of the DOE information that sort of slices up these numbers.
And just, you know, for everybody's reference, again, this is part of our story, is that our expenditures are not out of proportion with the expenditures of our neighboring schools and districts, and so I think that that is what this is going to show. And specifically, I believe, this weekend, we had questions about the methodology that we had used, and so we wanted to use the methodology that we've used throughout, but also this particular individual asked for us to use the DOE data sources, so that's what this is.
Correct. Do you want to talk about middle school outcomes? So one of the questions we had was comparing our three middle schools and how they do academically compared to one another, so these next several slides just show our numbers in comparison, so.
And again, the person who wrote, I guess, suggested that one of our middle schools outperformed the others, and that somehow there was a lesson that we should be learning from that, and, you know, I think that my overall take on this is not something that is new to the Board, that, you know, our performance across schools is very similar. We definitely do have significant achievement gaps in our student performance, and we do a great job even when you compare to some of the neighboring districts when we do apples-to-apples comparisons, and we don't do that well in apples-to-apples comparisons when we look at our free and reduced lunch, as well as any of our other populations, our at-risk populations, which is sort of the driving force around our focus on equity.
Okay. So the next section looks at our cost per high school student, and this is something we've looked at before, but one thing that we didn't mention before is that it was including extra and co-curricular costs, which at Portland and Deering are much higher, as they have athletic programs, and Casco Bay High School does not. So this excludes all extra and co-curricular -- that's a hard one. So to create a more even comparison. So you can see that the Deering cost per student is $10,038. If we reduce the extra activities, it's $95,06, and you can see the comparison. So really, here, one thing we wanted to look at was if we talk about consolidating the two schools, and we took out those costs, the total price is $9,198, and Casco Bay is still lower at $8,320. So these are the elementary class size proposals that we talked about at a prior meeting, and all this does is take the average class size with our current staffing -- this was not provided earlier -- and compares it with the average class size and the proposed staffing ratio. So again, these numbers are not different. This still shows a reduction of seven teachers overall if we were to increase class sizes. And just so everyone's aware, the increased class sizes are, at the kindergarten level, are 20 students per kindergarten class. One through three would be 23 students, and four and five would be 25 students, and if you look below, you can see where we actually end up with many of those ratios. The next page shows what it would look like if we were to use the Department of Education ratios. So we get credit for our teachers and students based on 15 children per kindergarten class, 17 children per one-through-five class. So if we were to staff according to those ratios, we would need to add 44 teachers to our budget at a cost of about $2.8 million. So we're not going to do that. So the Board had asked, had discussed that they had previously had a class-size policy, so we asked Dr. Stevens if she could help us out, and she actually did a presentation back in 2010 about class sizes at the elementary level. So this is the information that the Board had previously. So at the kindergarten level, the allowable size was 16 to 20. For grades one and two, it was 18 to 22, and for three to five, it was 18 to 25. And in the packet is also the presentation that was done in 2010. So on our meeting on the ninth, one thing that we had talked about was some pricing out of consolidating middle schools and high schools, and the middle school numbers that we talked about was as if we were consolidating all three schools together, the proposal would be that they would move to Deering High School. Deering High School is, in fact, not large enough to hold all three middle schools, so this consolidation looks at if we were to consolidate King and Moore, and that Lincoln would stay as-is. So I just wanted to point out that that previous consolidation thought that we could save up to $3.4 million, and this is a revised estimate of $1.2 million. And I will just note, because I'd said this previously, but this is based on student-to-teacher ratios. 966 students, we would estimate that we would need 57 teachers. Our special ed and ELL costs, we remained constant, so these are the actual expenditures in these two schools. The allocation is based on the number, the dollar amount we give to the school, based on the number of students that they have, so this would follow the students to the new building. The administrator ratios, this is the Department of Education administrator ratio, 305 administrators to -- 305 students to one administrator. This essentially cuts the co- and extracurricular costs in half. It keeps the custodians that are currently at Deering High School, as we would assume that we would need the same number of custodians, and again, adds a contingency of 10 percent. So we had a question from a Board Member about our legal rights to bargain with the unions.
Well, to unilaterally impose concessions on the union, that was -- Ms. Morioli had asked that question at the Board Workshop, and so she had asked us to get legal opinion from our attorney, so we've done that, and that's in your packet, and basically supports my assertion at the last meeting that we cannot unilaterally impose reductions in the bargain contract.
And then this final piece, we had, we've talked about the cost per student at our high schools, so we wanted to do the same for our elementary schools. So this is the cost per student in the Superintendent's recommended budget, and then the total cost for all elementary students at the bottom. That's all that we have for extra information this evening.
So any questions?
All the cost per student -- Lori, could you use the microphone? We're streaming live, so.
Okay. The cost per student, I'm assuming, since it, but it doesn't tell me for sure that this is current students, not the projected number or the capacity number of that building.
This is the 10-1-17 enrollment.
Enrollment.
That's included in the budget book.
Okay.
Thank you very much, both of you. So my question actually wasn't, I see the memo from our attorneys, but it wasn't regarding furlough days and our teachers. It was regarding if we did decide to reduce the number of days --
He addresses that directly.
-- to 175. And he does address that, however. He says if we were to change the number of days, then therefore, the teacher's contract would change. I mean, if you, he's not, he's addressing furloughs.
But he's saying we would have to pay them the same. So we can do that. We can reduce the number of days, but teachers would be paid what they're expected to be paid.
Annually.
Annually.
Okay. Thank you.
For less days of work.
Okay. Go ahead, Lori.
Does the contract spell out the teaching versus the professional development? Could those days be flipped from student days to professional development days instead, so the teachers are still working, but working differently? Savings, and I don't know how much it would be, would be transportation and some of those other ancillary costs. And actually, we capture some professional development days, which was a request in your additional part of the budget to have a summer institute.
Absolutely.
Okay. So it doesn't mean that they don't have to work. We could redirect how that work is taking place.
Absolutely. There's just no savings.
Any further questions on the -- go ahead.
I have a question about looking at the page regarding consolidating Portland High School and Deering High School, and if we include the extra and the co-curricular activities and consolidate those two schools, does it still save us an estimated $1.8 million? Because I know that just shows the proposed budget. I just want to make sure that the proposed cuts would save us $1.8 million.
That consolidation has not changed from what was presented previously.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Morioli.
I know I'm not on the Finance Committee, so I'm sorry. You can say it anytime. You have to wait, Ms. Morioli. It's okay. But my question now is, you were talking King-More consolidation, but wouldn't that only be able to take effect if we were to also consolidate the high schools, because we don't have the space in either of our middle schools for what you're talking, or someone wanted the information?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Davis.
Given capacity numbers, is it possible to consolidate through redistricting?
Say more. Say more.
That Moore has a capacity of around 700 students. It's significantly under that. This is sort of taking batches, you know, taking all of King and putting them all together with Moore. Is it possible to redistrict and move, we have excess capacity at Moore, and move that around, and in essence, accomplish the same thing, but without keeping those whole schools in one block?
We have a table for that, which you've seen before. The answer is no, but we can show you exactly why.
Okay. I can look at the table.
So this is, this is a table we have shown previously, and the unused capacity would not fill at the other two schools. There wouldn't be enough room for the King, for example, to go into Moore and Lincoln or any of the other.
The combined, the combined capacity at any two schools is not enough to take the 1,500-plus students. That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions on the follow-up information? Yes, Ms. Morioli.
Okay, so just going back again to the teacher contract, just for a second. So to Ms. Davis's point around, could we take that same amount of days and put it towards professional development, therefore, not having to pay for the professional development part that you had proposed for summer learning, that would be a cost savings, correct?
It would.
It would be?
Yes.
And can we get a dollar figure on the cost savings of that?
$186,000.
$186,000?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Seeing no further questions from my colleagues, Superintendent, would you?
Yes. So today, I'm presenting a budget that meets the 4.5 tax rate increase that you requested. As you know, this requires almost a $4 million cut from my proposed budget. I want to begin by underscoring that this is not my budget. This is a revision to my original budget crafted to comply with your request. As you will see, this budget requires painful cuts to programs and services that we all value, and it has been excruciating to arrive at. I stand by my original budget as sound and what I believe we need to sustain the quality education that we have now, and invest in the urgent needs to address the achievement gap and improve the equity in processes and outcomes for our students. I also want to underscore that the total budget request is consistent with what we predicted, what we forecast last year, $113 million. The revenue that we need to achieve it is different, so we have a revenue problem. I recognize that because of that revenue shortfall, our request seems large. It didn't seem large last year. As a Portland taxpayer myself, and as someone who has had to manage scarcity before, I understand people's frustration with this reality. But I would be remiss if I didn't point out the neighboring school districts are facing similar, significant reductions in revenues as well. In response to this, their educational leaders are taking the same approach that I took. Just yesterday, the Portland Press-Herald reported that Cape Elizabeth is proposing an 11 percent tax rate increase, and that Falmouth's tax rate increase proposal approaches 6 percent. I would like to read from the Portland Press-Herald article about some of the choices that our comps are making. This is from the article about Falmouth. Along with a new kindergarten teacher to accommodate enrollment growth, other personnel requests include a third guidance counselor at the elementary school, and an additional world language teacher, and computer science technology teacher at the middle school. At the high school, a new assistant athletic director is being proposed as our new part-time positions that would, quote, "diversify our music offerings to include strings and music theory, expand our computer science courses, and strengthen individualized support for all students in mathematics," end quote. I would like to, other districts in the region will also require the same type of increases to sustain and build on the quality education that they expect to provide to their families. Across the board, educational leaders are making the same choice when confronted with the reality that our communities' valuations are increasing, and that the state is telling us that we must take on a greater burden to sustain our schools. When I talk to those leaders, they see the same picture for next year that I see. This is not unique to Portland. What is different is the path that we're facing. The 4.5 percent tax rate increase proposal, as you will see, stands in sharp contrast with what I just read to you. I know that everybody wants to ensure that we have a viable school system as part of a viable city. The cuts I'm presenting today represent a different vision of the school district than what I proposed on March 6th. I understand that there are some who believe that our request is too large, and that the long-term prospects that we're outlining in our multi-year budget are not sustainable. I've heard you, and I've heard the council's calls for looking at school consolidations. I'm anxious to convene work groups, citizen advisory panels, and any other means necessary to explore those options. I appreciate the general recognition that there is very little that we can do in this realm, given our current timeline, and the community's, I believe, appropriate expectations for deliberation and execution on any consolidation. And as you will see, I'm including what I do think that we can execute on my proposed cuts today. I need your help. I need your help with determining how we sustain an attractive, thriving school system that meets our students' needs and helps us to achieve more equitable outcomes for our students and families in our new financial reality. I need your help with a long-term solution that does not require cutting out programming each year, and I need your help informing and engaging the public in this critical community dialogue. I don't have a ready-made answer, and I suspect that there isn't a single answer. It will require that we work together as a city, the council, the Board, the legislature, our employees, our business leaders, and our citizens to think through the proper district footprint, the programmatic thresholds that we believe in, perhaps determine if there are more diverse revenue streams to support our needs as a city. I would be happy to participate, or lead, or co-lead any effort that moves us in that direction. I've had conversations with each of you, the Board Members, individually over the past month. I've been told that one of the reasons you hired me is that I have experience with budget cuts. Over my tenure in my previous district, we eliminated our locally-funded preschool programs. We increased class size to 25 at the kindergarten through third-grade level and 28 at the fourth through fifth. We eliminated over half of our ed tech positions. We outsourced our facilities and maintenance. We reduced our administrative footprint. We reduced our administrative footprint by 20%, and we consolidated three middle schools into two and closed one of our nine elementary schools. The context in which this happened was very different from our own. The state of Indiana pushed the most aggressive privatization and vouchers agenda in the country in an effort to undercut public education. But Portland's values are different. And those values are the reason that I chose to come to Portland. I believe that our public schools are a valued community resource, and I believe that there is a community-wide commitment to closing the achievement gap. That is what inspired me about this job. I believe that the Portland community believes that our schools are worth the investment, and I still believe that this is a community dedicated to proving that a community is only as good as its weakest link. I'm still hopeful that this community will come through to sustain programming that is specifically designed to ensure that the least among us has a chance to succeed. I hope that once you see the cost in programming and services losses required to deliver on a 4.5 tax rate increase, you will see that. I hope that when you consider the long-term impact of these cuts and the prospects for more of the same going forward, you will find yourselves advocating for the long-term solution that we know that we need to find, even if we don't know what the answer is. So let's start by talking about what we're proposing to cut, to get to, close to that 4.5%. Yeah, we do.
It's very hard to see from here.
Yeah. We are handing it out.
It's hard to see here because there's no light, but it's impossible from there.
Jenna?
Just a second.
Sarah, you had a question.
I just wanted to say, I wanted to just say one thing after Superintendent Botana just read that. I want to be clear, and I checked with my colleague here, and there are three board members that weren't here when we hired you. And I want to make it very clear that in our discussion, we did not hire you for cost reductions. We hired you for visionary, your visionary leader. So I want to set the record straight for that because, in my opinion, as well as, I believe, Ms. Moriarty's, who were on the hiring committee, we did not hire you for reductions. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
I did not suggest that that was the only reason.
But no, that didn't come into my thinking of hiring you, so thank you.
It has been brought up by other board members.
All right. So these are the cuts that we are proposing in order to get close to, and you'll see that we did not quite get to that 4.5% increase. We're at 4.73. So this includes over $1 million in administrative cuts. The board saw some of those cuts in executive session the other day, and to those, we've added cuts in some of what I had proposed as additions for this year. So those are primarily the positions that we were putting in place to increase our academic capacity, so positions to lead in STEM, in math, in English Language Arts, and in social studies, added on to the administrative cuts that you had previously seen. We're proposing to make reductions in our middle school elective, so the specific reductions are a little bit variable by school. And the one that isn't is the general music strand at all three of the middle schools, so that would go away. It would not mean that our middle school students would not have access to instrumental or choral music. It just means that we would reduce the general music elective that is currently in our middle schools. And then another elective would be reduced at each of our middle schools, and that is still in the process of being worked out and may be different from one school to the other. You saw the elementary class size proposal, so this is a reduction of seven positions in our elementary schools. So this brings us to those thresholds that we talked about of 20 max for kindergarten, 23 max for first through third grade, and 25 max for fourth and fifth grade. I do include in here closing Peaks and Cliff. I know that nobody...
Don't skip elementary world language.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped elementary world language. So we are also, we have included in here eliminating our elementary world language. So this is our intermediate students getting exposure to Spanish as part of their elementary school experience. I have closing Peaks and Cliff. That is a very significant amount and, you know, for a very small number of students. Our plan for that, this is the one that I feel that we could execute on, our plan for that would be for the Peaks students to come to East End. I know that there have been, I've received correspondence from people saying, how would you, you know, you're not going to put a kindergartner on the ferry. And clearly, we have no intentions of giving the kids a ticket and asking them to take the ferry. We would clearly have supervision. They would be part of our transportation in the same way that we pick up students and bring them to whatever school it is that they're going to. They would be properly supervised throughout that, so that is built into the assumptions that are in here. We have a reduction of elementary ELL ed techs. These are positions that I would characterize as legacy positions, where at one time, the language that these individuals spoke was a common language at that school, but, you know, now they are basically fulfilling general ed tech positions at their schools, so that we would reduce those. The individuals in question would have seniority rights under their union contracts and be able to exercise those as appropriate. We estimated a retirement incentive that would yield about $273,000. I believe that's 18 people taking the retirement incentive that we had outlined before, which is basically a one-time payment of $10,000 as an incentive. So that's what that would yield. Eliminating the two school resource officers at our two comprehensive high schools. Reducing crossing guard routes. This is the reduction of eight routes, I believe, which we've detailed and is part of the online packet for people that would like to know where those cuts would actually go in place. We've made some additional reductions in our facilities contractual budget. This is something that we've not previously laid out to you, but as we sat down and sharpened our pencils, we found an additional $65,000 that we feel that we can do this year. We propose to reduce the board contingency from $175,000 to $75,000, so reduce that by $100,000, and $400,000 in yet-to-be-determined cuts at the high schools. And again, the theory around that was that since we took significant cuts at the elementary and at the middle school, that we would also look to make those reductions. So I know our principals who are here in the audience today are hard at work trying to figure out how to do that. So with that, my original proposal of $113 million goes down to $109.6. And Alicia, work us through the tax levy.
So this reduces our tax levy to $87 million. It's approximately half of the increase that we were asking for previously. It's a 5.1% increase in the levy, but due to some increased valuation, this would bring us to a tax rate of 11.11, so 50 cent increase. The previous increase was 99 cents. So again, this cuts it approximately in half, and the increase gets us to 4.73%.
Go ahead, Ms. Davis.
In the original proposed budget, there were a number of new items, moving people from grants over to local and other. Do you have a list of what of those increases remain in this budget?
We do, and...
Because that would be helpful for context.
Staffing pages will be available for Friday. They're...
Okay.
We finished this today.
Yeah, I understand.
They're not here today.
I've been on your side of the dais, so yep, it's a lot to get done in a short space of time.
But I can explain. So we've, in essence, eliminated the...
Three Kirkland's.
The investments that are going into the academic capacity, with the exception of the two-day summer retreat for teachers for $186,000. And we have kept the transition all, so we basically keep our focus on the whole student intact. So that includes the Director of Social Emotional Learning, the Extended Learning Opportunities coordinators at the high schools, the increase in social work for Riverton and Longfellow, and the Make It Happen position, transitioning from AmeriCorps to a district staff position.
All of which, for the public, those are new positions or moving positions from a grant-funded basis to a locally funded basis. They are not, while they may exist and be in our schools at the moment, they are currently funded not with local tax dollars, so it's an increase. What would be helpful for me is to see the same kind of value for each one of those so that we can look at what we are leaving, what you're proposing to... You've told us what you propose to cut. I'd like to have the ability to see what you're proposing to increase from what we currently locally fund.
What do you...
I'd like, how much is the cost of those positions? So just...
How much for the ELO folks? How much for mentoring? How much for Make It Happen? How much for the social worker?
I'll get that for you during public.
So that we really, we're being asked to look at cuts. I also want to know what increases that aren't currently funded with a tax dollar are buried that haven't been cut. We are adding those in, just so that we know and we can see clearly, because I think it's easy for people to think that we're cutting things that actually we don't currently fund. So seeing those increases, the Director of Social Emotional Learning, who's currently here and working but is funded through J.T. Gorman. And what we're being asked as a board is to pick that up, and what the taxpayers are being asked is to pick that up on the tax dollar as opposed to the grant dollar. So we need to be able to look at those and see them and have them broken out in writing. Please. Please.
We will get that for you.
For my colleagues on the board, any additional requests or questions about...
There's only three positions.
Yes, Ms. Moriarty.
I just wanted to clarify, Alicia, when I let... Sorry. No, but when we had gotten that list initially of looking at all of the potential cuts, under retirement incentive, and it says, see incentive document, there was a dollar figure there of $837,734, and that's what I wrote down. So I'm wondering, looking at now, what you...
We clarified that. There was, it was added where it shouldn't have been. There were two options, one that would yield 200 and something, another one that would yield 500 and something.
So this is what we put out previously. This is what we put out before, and this estimates that we could yield 18 retirements. So that's the 273.
Okay. Darn. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, the 296 is inclusive in the 541 below, so shouldn't add them together.
And that is, just to be clear, also an estimate. We don't...
We don't know.
We don't know if we would actually realize that. And there's no limitation. Am I correct? It's offered to anyone over 62, so we actually could end up paying money to people who are sitting there right now intending to retire.
That's correct.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. So I don't know if, I guess, Javier, thank you for putting this together. That was painful, and I hate to have you go through the exercise of putting something that reflects a 2.4% increase, which I think was a number that was floated around initially. I wanted to ask, do we have, and obviously, we don't have detailed information, but can you give us an idea, you know, from your point of view? If we were to make some of these cuts, all of these cuts or any combination of them, obviously, the services and the value of these positions remain. And so we would have to sort of kind of scramble and figure out, how can we do what we were doing without these people? So kind of we'd have to be, maybe not all of these services, not all of these positions, but clearly, we wouldn't want to just scrap everything out because a lot of these people that are involved in these cuts play a significant role in the value, in the overall value that we provide. So how much, how, and I don't know how we can quantify this, but what type of challenge would you be looking at, asking the remaining folks or the remaining buildings to kind of pick up the slack from these cuts? I want to get an idea, and again, contextualize these numbers, of what the effect would be. And I know that you've done it through somebody, specifically with the administrative cuts. We know, you know, we talked about that in executive session, but I just want you to kind of summarize that for us once again. Does that make sense?
I mean, it's hard to describe it in any way that is quantified. I mean, it's, you know, some of these things are program cuts that we won't pick up. Kids will not have Spanish at the elementary level. That won't get picked up. It's not, somebody else is going to be teaching them Spanish as part of their, you know, daily instruction. It's just, you know, that's not going to happen. Kids at the middle school won't have access to general music or the other elective that gets cut. I don't know what the high school cuts are, but those are going to actually be programmatic. There may not be a specific language or something or, you know, computer science or some class that, you know, that might not be offered. So there is, you know, there is a real impact on that. On the administrative side, that's, it's huge. It means, you know, that we're all going to be doing more or not doing some things that we currently do. And, you know, we've walked through what some of those specific, you know, reductions would entail for me personally, for, you know, for our team at the administration. So I think that those are very real cuts. You know, closing Peaks, I know that we have folks from Peaks here who believe fervently that that is, you know, a core part of the lifestyle of the island. And so I don't, you know, I don't take it lightly. But, you know, when we are talking about consolidating across the district, I think it's, it has to be on the table that we look at cutting the one place where we actually can execute on that, understanding the effect that it has on the island community. And I probably don't understand it as well as, you know, some other people on the board and in the audience. I'm not, you know, saying that I do, but I understand that that will have an impact. So I guess my point is that all of these come with implications. There's nothing in here, frankly, other than the retirement incentive, which I know not everybody agrees with either, that is, you know, that is, you know, something where we don't lose something, other than the valuable experience of some people that might not have retired but chose to do it as a result of this, so.
Yeah. So I guess, thank you, Javier. I guess the reason I ask is because through this process, we hear, and I've heard my colleagues say that, as we consider cuts, we'd like to keep them as far away from the classrooms as possible, to have as little impact on education as possible. And it becomes more and more obvious to me that that's an impossible task. And it's the type of, I guess, approach that, for me, doesn't really add up, you know, to say that we're trying to keep cuts away from the classroom. They all affect our students. I mean, I'm going to listen to what the rest of the board has to say and what other questions come up, and I'm really actually incredibly excited to hear what the public has to say today. I wanted to, you know, guys, I love sharing my stories with you. I wanted to ask one story specific to the world languages. has to say today. I wanted to, you know, guys, I love sharing my stories with you. I wanted to ask one story specific to the world languages. So, you know, you guys know my daughter's a student at Lyssit. She receives two 45-minute Spanish classes during the week. And as I was talking with someone about the Spanish classes, I remembered a few years ago when my daughter came home and she was singing the "Lo Poyito Diz en Pio Pio Pio." It's a Spanish song. It's like a lullaby, incredibly popular in Latin America. But I'd never shared it with her, right? And then she came home and she tells me that, and, and it triggered all these memories of when my grandmother used to tell it to, sing it to me. And so I then, that triggered me to tell her all these stories about grandma and "Auelita" used to do this, you know what I mean? And it, so she's like, "A 45-minute class," turned into a, a lesson to my daughter about her heritage, about her grandmother, and again, it triggered all these amazing memories on my head. And I guess that came up in a conversation, so I just wanted to share that with you guys, what that 45-minute class did for my family a couple of years ago. And you guys know how important it is for me to tell, to show my kid, you know, the value of her heritage and how difficult that is in, in, you know, in my life, you know, because we're so remote from her, where she's from, where my family's from. I haven't, you know, I haven't held back. I think everybody's pretty, you know, should be, pretty aware of where I stand on the budget and the process. And like I said a minute ago, I just want to see what the rest of the board has to ask and comments they have to make. Thank you.
Mr. Atkinson?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, the administrative cuts, the, the number is higher than we've seen in the past. I just wanted to, that's, that's a couple of positions that were going to be added but are now not. So that doesn't include the elementary vice principals?
It does not.
Okay, great. Oh, the other question I had was on facilities. We've, you know, we just had the bond this year, and, you know, a lot, a lot of that seemed to be deferred maintenance catching up with us. Is this just going to set us further behind and set us up for another situation where we're, where we're, you know, potentially setting future, our future selves up for, for something larger like that?
Yeah, so these reductions are in contracted services, so they're services that we will not be contracting for. I mean, they're things that we, you know, have prioritized to, to not put in the 19 budget, so. I mean, they're not people, they're not supplies, but it is contracted services through outside groups that would perform services at PPS.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
This is a painful list, and as I share with Javier, this brings me back to when I first joined the board. Up until 2010 or 11, we had the same kind of crowd. We had children coming to the microphone, and this does not feel good at all. And I appreciate the support from the community, and we worked so hard to get away from this kind of budgeting. And so that really sets me back as a, as a board member, you know, about 10 years, and it's a shame. But, so the proposed cuts that you have listed here, a majority of them I am not in favor of. The one, while I still know it will have an impact, is the elementary class size and the retirement incentive. I just don't know how we could even approach closing Peaks and Cliff. It just, it doesn't make any sense. That's a knee-jerk reaction. If we're going to talk about our buildings and talk about redistricting, we cannot be closing schools as a result of a budget. It has to be a community conversation, and people bought in. While it may be painful if we end up doing it ever, but it has to be a conversation with that community as well as the community as a whole in Portland about how we do schools. And the school resource officers and crossing guards, I mean, hello. They just, the, the things that are going on in this country right now, I mean, that just is absolutely absurd to me. And I know that you put this list together, and these are not your cuts, but some of these are really, really absurd. And I could not, in my good conscience, cut school resource officers and crossing guards. I mean, those are key to the safety, and if anything, we should be increasing crossing guards and school resource officers. I just want to say, on the school resource officers in particular, in talking to an old, well, not old, a colleague that used to be on the council as well as on the school board, who's now works for the state of Maine in the corrections, he really shared with me what the school resource officers bring to the plate for those schools. And while we don't have one here at Pass and Casco, I, I feel like in the future we can add one. And we talk about social, emotional learning, and we talk about, you know, I was watching something, I think it was on channel, I don't know, six or eight, about talking to educators about the signs in which students show tendencies for violence. And the school resource officers in particular head off so many of those situations, stuff that doesn't even come to the surface, because they are in touch with the students, they are in touch with the staff, they work with Long Creek, they work with outside resources. So again, for $118,000 is just ridiculous. Crossing guards, we've had kids get hit by cars, and we, the city passed this nice, you know, I'm not putting up an adversarial, but this was something we inherited last year from the city. They used to pay for our crossing guards. And so I, I'm getting concerned that if there's more things that come over to our side, from the city side, that it is, as we've all said, one big budget, but we seem to shift things pretty easily over to the school side and make it look like we're cutting them when they've been a shifting cost. So I'm not in favor of 99.9% of this, and I would explore the retirement incentive and the elementary class size, because I think that those, while they are, not the retirement incentive, painful, the class size is a little painful. It's, it's less painful in my mind to all of the rest of this, so, thank you.
So I want to limit, you know, our conversation to, you know, asking clarifying questions about the proposal. The finance committee will be deliberating on this, and obviously, it's great to hear comments from colleagues who are not on the finance committee, but I really, we have, we have members of the public who have turned out tonight to speak on this, and I want to make sure that we are focusing our time so that we can maximize their time. Ms. Davis?
I guess from what Ms. Thompson mentioned, which is that we have held harmless and said we can't touch schools on the mainland, in neighbors, neighborhoods on the mainland, yet why was it that people felt we could touch island neighborhoods? Thank you. They are neighborhoods, and they have suffered for decades as the poor stepchild of Portland. You don't know that, but many of the people in the audience do, and I do. So why are we treating tho, that, those two neighborhoods differently than we're treating any other neighborhood in the city?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Lori.
That's a question. Why did we single out those two neighborhoods when we did not choose to single out any mainland neighborhoods for potential closure?
Attempt to explain it, but I also want to start by reminding everybody that this is not my budget.
I understand that, but it seems to be a double standard.
So let me explain. I've said that it is the only consolidation that I believe that we can execute on the time schedule that we're working with. I don't think it's ideal. I would much rather do it as part of a larger consolidation conversation, but when I'm asked to cut $4 million?
Why did you not look at any other school? We have excess capacity.
Because we've had this conversation
Or redistricting on the mainland.
And we've talked about the fact that in the timeframe that we have, we, we cannot do it. We do not have the capacity to move to redistrict the entire district. And I've shown you, and you can look at it again, exactly what our capacity looks like. The new numbers that you have are now including the largest possible capacity number. So we went back to 2009, used the NASDAQ study, used the highest number capacity, and with that, if we try to do a contiguous reorganization of our two smallest elementary schools on the mainland, Longfellow and Presumscott, in both cases, we wind up with 100 kids at each school that don't have a place to go in their next, in the schools that are immediately abutting them. So that means we have to do the entire district, and we don't have the capacity to do that in this time schedule.
Ms. Mariani, is this a question?
I just, I just have to say this, only, only because I concur with what Ms. Thompson was saying, and I'm sorry, it's not going to be a question, but I just need to let you know that we're feeding right into what's happening, happening on a national level, which is to basically dismantle public education, in my opinion, in this very room in the sense that we are not, we, the board, who's, who's elected officials to take our students and make sure they are in the best interest, in our best interest, we're not looking out for their best interests with these types of cuts. So I'm just going to put it out here. I will not be supporting, as Ms. Thompson said, 99% of what's been listed here. Thank you to the superintendent and Alicia for all your hard work. And I, I, I'm, I don't know how you're going to get it out of finance, but when it comes to the rest of the board, I think the rest of the board, there's been strong adversarial, I mean, we're, we're not in support of what's happening right now. So I am looking also at other districts around us that take their budgets, and sometimes they may not pass, like in Scarborough, their school budget doesn't, our budget has always passed. So if we can get it to our, our taxpayers to help, to help us decide, just as the school bond, we weren't sure that was going to pass, and amazingly, it passed overwhelmingly. So until we get out of our own seats and let the taxpayers vote on something, we're just, we're just going to keep this, this adversarial role within our own board, and it's not fair to our public. So I thank you for letting me just vent for a moment. I've seen to be doing that really well these days, so I apologize to the community. But yeah, thank you for hearing me.
And I think it's actually probably time for us to hear from you as the public. And so if we could have you state your name and your address for the record, and then we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Please do not applaud or boo. We want to make sure that public comment is the opportunity for free speech, and it doesn't matter what, you know, those comments indicate. We just ask that you hold your applause or boos. And three minutes, go ahead.
Good evening, members of the finance committee, the school board, Superintendent Botana. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Brian Olson, and as a member of the Peaks Island Elementary School Vision Team and a year-round Peaks Island resident with two children, age six and eight, attending P.I.S., I have a major stake in the recent island school closure idea. This idea is a cost-cutting move to balance Port Unified's budget proposal and the tax raise to Portland residents, but it's also an off-target regressive tactic. For the past three years, under the guidance of Peaks Island and Cliff Island Elementary School teacher leader Renee Serio, P.I.S. has grown into a major sustainable educator of our island students and community. Through diligent action and attention to instruction and curricular advancement, all academic state testing scores have been raised. Through an intentional focus on environmental methodology, the students have increased their knowledge of positive local practices that affect our island population, and the school has become a center for island progress. We have composting, waste management, diverse native historical traditions, healthy culinary efforts, energy-efficient boiler installation, dishwasher systems to eliminate paper-plastic reliance, chicken raising, egg collecting for island food pantries, and the open-armed welcoming of the Peaks branch of the Portland Public Library and its space. Add these examples of educational environmental investment to the upcoming impact of public pre-K joining P.I.S. for the 2018-19 school year and the edible school gardens design project, and it's easy to recognize what a vital and thriving hub our school is for island students like Dylan and Kami LaRue. Phrasing this "our school" is intentional as well, when considering that this is a year-round community and an educational space that aligns with challenges and obstacles of island living. Holding on to our important youthful culture and not only becoming a summering community with a large generational gap is an essential aim and one that the closure of an island school completely disregards. Without an island educational opportunity, especially one so steeped in tradition and forward-thinking for students, the young families of the island will be supplanted by monetary investors from away. This does not work from a sustainable economic perspective or from the lens of supporting a thriving island that prides itself on the interpersonal and intergenerational repes, excuse me, interpersonal and intergenerational relationships that we have developed. A school closure does not only impact the youth of the island, it would have an extreme effect on the community businesses, employment opportunities, diversity of residents, and serve to widen a socioeconomic gap and equity gap that you, Javier Botana, have claimed that you're attempting to avoid with the same Portland Unified School District budget plan. Please, upon reviewing this communication and many more that are behind us, and we all stand in solidarity here, I am certain that you will recognize the need for further exploration of other ideas to balance a school budget and city economics besides the elimination of a school setting that is an instrumental foundation for youth knowledge-seeking, understanding, and community building at a time when we need it most.
Amen.
I ask that you hold your applause, please.
I'm Arthur Fink. I live at 10 New Island Avenue on Peaks Island. I no longer have children in the Peaks Island School, but the school is very important to me, as important as it is to all of the parents who are also here. I appreciate that this is not your visionary budget, it's a budget prepared under duress. And I could stand here and speak against almost all of the cuts, but I'm going to choose to speak against the cut that leads to a slow death. Cutting the Peaks Island School and I, and also the Cliff School will lead to the slow death of the island. Reading a few sentences from an article in the Vanguard Daily News, it's actually about smaller islands, "When an island school closes, women and children leave because they have to go to school elsewhere. Then the store and post office close, and the fishermen leave with their families." That's how you kill off an island community. I am very sad that the people and the politicians of Portland won't support an adequate budget. And I hope that the end result of this is that you don't pass a full set of cuts, but you come back and say that you couldn't, and that we are all going to have to pay a little bit more in our tax base. And none of us love to, to pay more taxes, but we certainly want to have an adequate school system. That slow death is the long-range consequence. The short-range consequence is absolutely against the best interests of the island children, and I could say, our children. I can't imagine the young ones, even with supervision, having to navigate a boat and then a bus and being so far from home, and then having to go back again and again. When my daughter did that in junior high school, it was tolerable. In high school, it's fine, but for these young ones, it's not. I beg you, I urge you to take off the table of possible cuts, cuts to the island schools. The other cuts are painful, and maybe we need to swallow some very bitter pills, but this is a different kind of cut. Cut the arts, and many of us, although not all of us, will provide more arts at home. Cut phys ed or music, and the same thing can happen, although those things belong in school. But cut out the island school, and there is no way that we can make up for it. Our community is shattered, our community will disintegrate, our islands will fade away. There may be some politicians that want that to happen. I doubt that any of you do, and I hope that you will stand up to the political structure in Portland, and perhaps you'll need to say that you could not find the cuts that they seek. Thank you.
Thank you. I ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and also to hold on your applause or boos. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Becky Lynch, and I live directly across the street from the Island Elementary School. This is my first grader. You're going to tell me you're going to put this toddler and this little boy, come here, Theo, in the fall with some strange person on the boat
It's a little shy.
by themselves to a school that's already overpopulated as it is, and you're going to tear it away? The Peaks Island Elementary School is not just a school, it is the heart of Peaks Island. She is a fifth gen, she is a fifth-generation alumni. Okay, that school's been open for over 200 years. My family has gone to that the whole time. If you shut that school down If you shut that school down, you'll ruin the whole island. We will lose all of our small families, you'll compromise all of the businesses. This is my mom. It's the only year-round restaurant. You take away the small families that go there for breakfast on the weekends like this one, where are we going to go? What are we going to do? You're literally asking to rip apart everyone's world that lives on that five-mile-round rock that is family. Let me tell you another point. Peaks Island, as an island, and I can tell you this from a very responsible person, that up to almost one-third of Portland's taxes come from Peaks Island. So please don't take that school away. You're losing your own tax money. It's sad. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent and School Board. My name is Lisa Lynch, and as you just met my family, some of it, another one's back there, there's others. But the whole island is a family. I've watched all of these little babies, some of these adults grow into adults, grow into children that are going to go to our school. But I think more importantly, what we have to look at is, unfortunately, several years ago, in 2006 and '07, and also in '10 and '11, Peaks Island as a whole, or as a partial, I should say, tried to make a secession effort from the city of Portland in order to become our own year-round island community, self-sustaining. We were not granted that, and the reason we were not granted that was that they suddenly, City of Portland suddenly realized when Long Island, about 14, 15 years ago now, seceded what they were going to lose on a revenue base. Well, I think before you consider going any farther, you need to consider looking up what the results were. When the state said we could not secede, they also said that if the City of Portland threatened our schools or did not provide us adequate parking on the mainland, which we now do not have because of a gazillion hotels, so 50% of this is already behind, that they would allow us to secede and become our own community, in which case you'd be looking for another $7.5 million for your budget. So I thank you, and I hope that you will consider that a sustainable year-round community is only built around a post office, a store, and a school. And if you take away one-third of that, what we'll have is a community that no longer can enjoy the island as a place for people to explore themselves. We have such wonderful art, we have kids who are just amazing. My granddaughter, I'm not going to put on that boat. Many of us don't have cars in town. What happens if you have a child that gets injured and you're three miles across the ocean? Are you going to go pick her up and take her? Probably not. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Barbara Hoppin. From the year 1999 to 2005, I was the principal of the Portland Peaks Island School and the Cliff Island School. They are just a vibrant part of the island. I thought about it tonight, and I thought, imagine on this side, I'm wearing an SOS sign, which means "save our schools," and on the other side, I'm wearing an SOI, which means "save our island," because research has been done by the Island Institute that when the schools leave, the island goes down. Part of our problem is that our island has become a tourist place. And believe me, when summer is over, and we all go like this, and the kids start walking back to school, we are a very happy group. I am happy to still be a part of that school. Just wrote a grant with Renee, my husband and I. I've taken kids on field trips this year, I've gone in and worked with different kids, read with them. It's a true part of our island, and it is not just some little place. Portland has to think about the islands as the neighborhoods. And I think some of the things that have been said about the fact that on our island, don't forget, half the people go home, and they don't even use our services. They're still paying the same taxes that anyone else is, but they don't even use the services. So I think those are some of the things that have to be thought about, and I do thank you for your time, but as an educator, I really sincerely ask that those schools be left open. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of some people who did not come here.
Could you state your name and your address, please?
Joseph Visimana. Gentlemen, you went to school, you got your education, and everybody here went to school and got their education. Why do you want to deprive these children and put them at risk instead of expanding and funding them more, but cutting them and bringing them here? Is it going to be like another Puerto Rico, forgetting them there and thinking that they are not ours? They belong to Portland. Fund them. Other countries are educating their children, but we are putting them in a box. Let them study, let them learn, let them grow, be the future of this state and the We don't have any other future. Our children are our future. Why do we have to squeeze them instead of letting them free and learn at ease? You talked about cutting Spanish, the language, and all this music? Come on. You know very well that diversity is very important. How many languages do you speak? Okay, I speak six. There are many others who want to learn other languages and learn other cultures, because this country is not going to be landlocked. People are going to travel and they know the world, and they serve the world. Keep the language in class. Cut somewhere else. You cut this, you are attacking diversity. You are attacking minority. You are attacking the poor, the people who are across in that island. Please, go back. You are educated, you can't just sit there on a paper and sing how to deprive other people's education. Please. Thank you.
Please refrain from applause, thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Victor. I live at 31 Cushman Street, and I am the director of Protect Our Neighborhood Schools. I'm also the co-chair of the Reiki School PTO, and on behalf of many Reiki families, I want to apologize for, or say that there's many families who wanted to be here tonight, but tonight is our annual auction, which is our biggest fundraiser of the year, and so the Reiki families are at that event, many of them. And just to get a sense of what we raise money for as the PTO, supplementing what the schools already provide, we raise money for things that many people would think are provided already by our city and the state. We provide technology in the classrooms, we provide funding for teacher training, we provide funding for field trips, we provide funding for kids to be able to learn to swim, to do art and movement classes during the day, and we provide scholarships for kids to be able to participate in after-school activities. These are things that as a PTO, we're supplementing. As a community, the community surrounding Portland is so generous, and we're needing to do that because that's not provided by the schools. We need to do more for our schools, not less. We have wonderful schools. I feel so lucky to send my fifth grader and my first grader to the Portland Public Schools, but I feel lucky because of what the schools are now, and we absolutely can't see the types of cuts that are considered. Instead, we, you know, I know there's been an outpouring of support for the superintendent's budget. Already, at least 85 members of the Protect Our Neighborhood Schools list have written individual emails to the School Board and the City Council, asking you to support the superintendent's budget. Of everyone who wrote, there is one single person who said that she didn't support the superintendent's budget versus 85 who said they did. I think that you, the public, if you move forward with the superintendent's budget, you will see that you will get a lot of support from the public, from the voters. They want to see what we're doing in Portland, the great education system that we have in Portland sustained and improved. We want to continue to reduce the achievement gap, we want our students to be able to achieve more, and we absolutely don't want to backtrack. So I want to thank the superintendent for the work he's doing, and really encourage you to reject these cuts and to move forward with a budget that we all can be proud of. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mulki Haji, and I'm a senior at Daring High School. I just want to start off with this. I'm really hungry and I'm a bit tired. I don't really know about all of you guys, but I do agree on what most of the people are talking about. And it's really unfortunate that we're making all these budget cuts. But to start off with my speech, I just wanted to mention that I'm speaking on behalf of the Make It Happen program, and then here I go. I was part of the Make It Happen program since I was in the sixth grade, and the Make It Happen program, for me, as a Muslim, as a woman, as a student, as a Somali, as an immigrant, I can truly say to myself that the Make It Happen program has impacted me tremendously. Through academics, I don't really do sports, but clubs and other extracurricular activities. Some of you guys might not understand why the Make It Happen program is important to me, because most of you guys are not immigrants. But to those immigrants, I just wanted to say, I think they will understand me at best. Tim Cronin, a Make It Happen director, has helped me with my college process, has helped me get into these fantastic programs that I'm doing. And now that I'm a senior, I just wanted to mention that I'm going to Bowdoin College in the fall of 2019. Thank you. With the support from the Make It Happen program, I got accepted to this program called the Bezos Scholars up in Aspen, Colorado, and me and my educator are now creating this multicultural youth summit at Daring High School, which is an entire day dedicated to my festival, which will speak about Black Lives Matter, the LGBTQ community, mental health, and immigration. I believe these topics are prominent within the Portland community, and I believe that a lot of people need to be educated on this, on these matters. We're also having TED-style talks, research and presented by Daring High School students. We are also having dialogue discussions about these topics. We're also going to have a mural. I'm not really artistic, but I wanted to include an artistic piece, I mean aspect, to my festival because I am actually trying to explore the subject of art. So yeah, we're having a mural depicting the four topics that we are trying to present at the event, which is going to happen on April 9th, be that's in a couple of weeks or so. So yeah, so the Make It Happen program has impacted me as a student. They have helped me become the person I am today. They have not only have helped me, but they've helped a lot of Make It Happen students as well. And the Make It Happen program, they took a role that my parents couldn't take. So most of you guys went to school, I'm not only talking to the School Board people, but to the public as well, most of your parents, hello. Most of your parents went to school, they got their education, you probably have families who are doing terrific things with your life. My parents were not able to go to school. They didn't finish their high school career yet.
Mulki, you're at three minutes, Kado. You're at three minutes.
Oh, got it, thank you so much. I didn't know this was timed. But yeah, so my parents didn't finish their high school career. The Make It Happen Center took the role that my parents couldn't make. They've helped me through the college process, like FASA, the financial aid. They made decisions for me that my own parents couldn't make. My parents are amazing people. They help me with whatever they can, they support me for whatever I do, and I'm just truly blessed to be part of the Make It Happen program, and I'm truly blessed to be standing here, talking to all of you guys today. So thank you very much for your time.
Hi, I'm Chuck Rades. I'd like to make two brief points, and actually, before I do that, thank you for being on this very tough committee. I know being on the School Board is not always easy. No matter what you decide, there's always a group of people who are unhappy. My first point would be, as a Maine resident, my hope would be, with the change in administration, the fact that we have a budget surplus this year, that that ratio of spending that's going to come back to the schools is going to return to normalcy at some point, and that we will have an administration that will support more funding back to the cities. If that happened, then, you know, some of these bigger rate increases might not be necessary. Secondly, as a Peaks Island resident, I moved out there in 1985 to be the public health physician when Peaks was the poorest neighborhood in Portland. That's why they had a public health physician out there. And although things have changed, and superficially, you know, you can get off the boat, go up to the candy store, see the expensive houses on the rim of the island, there's considerable poverty still on our island. Not everyone on this island lives there as a lifestyle, as I heard earlier this evening. People are out there for multiple generations, they're not wealthy multiple generations that have stayed out there through family money. And the third point that I would make is that, let me walk you through what my children do. Both my girls went to the Peaks Island School, both of them went to Reiki, both of them went to Portland High School, where they not only had a great education, but they had a great cultural education. We didn't have a car in those days, they walked to the school, not very far away, but if you can imagine, the three-quarters of a mile walk from our house to the ferry, you don't get there right when the ferry comes in, you have to get there five or 10 minutes early. You get on the boat, you're a kindergarten, first grade, third grade, fourth grade, you're still a really little kid. I don't worry about the kids on the boat as much. There are family groups on there, you know, they're going to sit together, but they have a 20, 25-minute boat ride. They get off, they have to walk to the bus. I figure it's about an hour door to door. Now, if you live in Portsmouth and you want to go to school in Portland as a first grader, you've got about an hour commute. If you live anywhere in Portland and you're in grade school, you don't have an hour commute. So I would just put that into your thinking a little bit here. Thank you.
And if you miss the boat, you have to wait a long time for the next boat.
Good evening. My name is Tim Cronin, and I oversee the program Make It Happen for the City of Portland that you just heard about from Mulki. Thank you, Mulki. I'm here tonight because I'm very aware, and everyone's aware, that it's a considerable budget, but also there's talk about converting the Make It Happen position, which is right now in AmeriCorps, where staff, fortunately, through a partnership with the AmeriCorps program. And even, although the AmeriCorps program is fabulous, and we've really secured all kinds of support from really remarkable individuals who've influenced kids' lives, including Danielle Wong, who is the person that Mulki was talking about, who's our Make It Happen Site Coordinator at Portland right now. Ideally, we're going to transition one day, maybe even in this budget, to a situation where it's a permanent, full-time position, and it'll hopefully combat things like a transient type of hiring and... transient type of hiring and staffing arrangement whereby the staff changes over every year. Kids get used to our staff members for all kinds of reasons. It can really, it can really help. So, I thought I'd share the comments. I asked this young woman, but she's now a mom, to come and speak on our behalf. And she's a Deering High School alumni, and her name is Zam Zam Abdurrahman. And she asked me to read these comments for her because she couldn't be here tonight. She said, "Please say sorry." "Hello, everyone. I'm sorry I couldn't make it tonight, but I'd like to share a couple of things about Make It Happen. I am extremely thankful for Make It Happen, for the support I got, especially when it came to applying and preparing for college. As first-generation students, my siblings and I couldn't get that crucial college preparedness guidance from our parents. So, when it came to applying for college, we had no idea," of course, it just disappeared. "We had no idea what to do. Make It Happen provided us with AmeriCorps mentors that helped us prepare college applications, apply for financial aid, and go on to college tours with us. If it weren't for my mentor, who I'm still thankful to this very day, I wouldn't be where I am, in parentheses, a graduate of Bowdoin College. Make It Happen's a program that's critical to the success of not only first-generation students, but also multicultural ELL students. These students often fall through the cracks because they can't receive the kind of academic and college help they need at home. If given a chance, these students can be great and do amazing things. Please take a chance on these students and their futures, and I promise you, you won't regret it." Thank you. And I just wanted to finish by saying, yes, a few of our students have secured admission to colleges like Bowdoin and very competitive schools, but the vast majority of our kids are kids who go to SMCC, USM. And I have to say that, of course, they'll most likely get there, but the difference is that with support programs like Make It Happen, they can maximize their potential. So, thanks.
Hello. My name is Robert Moldaver. I'm a Portland resident, and my son is getting close to finishing 10th grade. Has been through the Portland Public School system, starting in Reiki, moving through King, and now here at Casco Bay High School. You received a letter from me and some of my colleagues from King Middle School, so I'll kind of just leave that stand for itself. And I'd like to talk as a parent and as an engaged community member in Portland, where we, I think all know, without excellent schools, we have a real problem where eventually we can face a situation where our communities suffer and wind up in a, what I call, a bit of a spiral, where families will look to other communities to move to. And we will wind up with that loss of a certain amount of our tax base, and wind up perhaps as more of other cities reflecting some of that difficult situation of inner-city poverty. Now, we do have significant poverty in Portland, and in Maine in general. But to see that exacerbated, I think, would be really a very hard situation to turn around. And I see our role now as a community with these tighter times, faced with less coming from the state, that we need to step up. And we need to support a full, robust budget to make it through some of these tougher times, and we owe it to our students, we owe it to our children, we owe it to our broader community. And I understand and agree with the ideas of equitable outcomes. I fully support and agree that Portland has values that supports that notion. I also feel that we have an ability and are closing achievement gaps, but we have more to do, and we cannot do that more with less. I feel that the role of the school board is one of advocacy for our students and our schools. I feel the school board has a role to play to convince our city councilors and the broader community to speak up loudly, clearly, frequently, and to rally around a positive budget to make it through some tough times, so that we can continue to see our schools be considered excellent and our community to continue to thrive. So, I'd also just like to wrap up saying that Mulki Haji, who spoke eloquently earlier, she was one of the presenters at the new teacher orientation here at the beginning of the school year. She was fantastic and obviously did a great deal, a great service of promoting and supporting Make It Happen. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Mary Beth Nolte, and I live at 50 Deering Run Drive. The community of Portland is changing, and it appears this district will no longer be a minimum receiver of funds from the state. I am here to urge you to find a way to make up for this shortfall in a responsible way for our students, teachers, and taxpayers. Tonight, I'll use a metaphor that many of us use daily. In my life, I wear many hats. I want to share with you my perspective from the hats of educator, parent, and taxpayer. I speak to you first as an educator. I have worked for several years in a nearby school district that frequently battles over their budget. Please let me assure you, it is demoralizing for schools and teachers. As much as we try to continue with business as usual, it cannot help but have a trickle-down effect on our students. We must find a way to build a responsible budget that affirms the value of our children and educators. I also want to affirm the value of art, music, and world languages in our K-12 curriculum. In particular, PBS reports that arts education provides developmental benefits that support motor skills, language development, decision-making, and visual learning. The cumulative effect of these benefits is very valuable in my high school classroom. In fact, I frequently hear students talk about their experience with the arts as they make connections to literature and engage in higher-order analytical thinking. Next, please consider my view as a parent. I have intentionally chosen Portland as my home because of the diversity this city offers. And when I refer to diversity, I am not just considering culture, but socioeconomics, religion, politics, and more. My family highly values this diversity, which is not easy to find in a state as geographically isolated as Maine. Right now, this diversity is part of the challenge that Portland faces. The diverse cultural backgrounds and socioeconomic situations that our students face mean that not all Portland students have equitable opportunities. Public education in Portland is not just for the benefit of white, middle-class students like my children. Every single one of my daughter's classmates deserves the same opportunities for academic success. Therefore, we cannot cut funding that would impact learners that benefit from Portland's promised achievement, whole-student, and equity goals, programs like Make It Happen that are amongst those critical to the success of all of our students. Finally, we must be wary of budget cuts that cause unintended expenses in the form of teacher turnover. My conversations with staff indicate that they feel they are already working with a skeleton crew. There are fewer ed techs, even as more students identified with English language learning or special education needs are being mainstreamed in classrooms. Reading teacher positions have been cut due to loss of Title I funds. If teachers decide to seek a school system that pays better and provides greater supports, they can certainly find one. At the national average for turnover, the National Commission on Teaching in America's Future has a cost calculator that estimated the cost of teacher turnover in Portland yearly at $550,000. If we were to increase from the national average of 12.5% turnover to just 15% turnover, we would increase our costs by at least $100,000. I do not think that our district should risk the unnecessary cost of teacher turnover by cutting programs and staff. Rather, I think we need to identify other ways to maximize savings while preserving a maximum benefit to students and teachers. I support the original budget proposal from Superintendent Potana. While I can understand the desire to propose a responsible budget, I will not support cuts if teachers and programs are what is on the chopping block. Thank you for listening. I look forward to the continued success of Portland Public Schools for my children and yours.
Again, we ask that you please keep your comments limited to three minutes and hold applause. Hello.
My name is Giovanna Bichard. I am a parent of two boys at Liseth Elementary School. I'm here to tell you tonight that I will pay more. Our kids deserve better. They deserve the budget without all of the cuts. I urge you tonight to not be bullied into a budget that is not in the best interest of our kids. Our kids deserve the expanded string program that the kids in Cape get, and the world language program in the elementary schools. My kids shouldn't have to have the, quote, "write zip code" in order to get the opportunities that provide them to reach their potential. I will pay more so all kids who need the extra help from an ed tech get that help. I will pay more to make sure the foreign language programs continue to exist in our elementary schools. I will pay more. Tonight Superintendent Potana said that kids will not have. Then he went on to list a series of programs that will be cut under this budget, which I understand was difficult and I know you did not want to make. However, I think that a sentence that starts with "kids will not have" is not a sentence that should be acceptable in this school district. I think you should send the full budget without the cuts to the taxpayers and then ask them to vote. If we are willing to pay more, let us pay more. And then make the city council come up with more cuts instead of constantly coming to the schools to ask us to make cuts that make our kids suffer. If this school district is serious about doing what's right for our kids, then we need to be serious about doing what works. That means we need to resource our public schools. That means we need to have teachers and support staff that feel supported and that they want to work here. We will not be able to attract and retain teachers in this district and have the best quality teachers and support staff if we continue down this path. If I haven't made it clear, I will pay more for my boys. I will pay more for my school, Liseth Elementary. I will pay more for the administrators, and I will pay more for the teachers and support staff because they are worth it. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name's Nathaniel Deloche. I'm a Portland resident of Main Avenue. I have two kids in the Liseth School. I came here tonight, and I wasn't planning on speaking. I don't have anything here written in front of me. But I have been reading the articles in the Portland Press Herald, seeing the budgets and all this stuff, and quite honestly, I'm ashamed to be a citizen of Portland at this point. Never in my life have I ever thought that the city would have, like I read last week, a possible pay-to-play program for sports or cutting the school islands. I've lived here for 41 years, and the fact that you are going to be cutting elementary schools on the island, and the fact that you're going to be cutting school teachers, for what, because you guys can't find tax money? Really? Really? I've seen Portland grow, probably like maybe none of you have, maybe because none of you are actually from foreign races. Maybe you are. You're in my district. Thank you. But quite honestly, as I was sitting back there, I read the median of the, you know, household, I mean, how much it costs to buy a house here in Portland, and it's, you know, it's almost $300,000. And you're telling me that we can't raise taxes enough so my kids can't have the proper education or the proper resources, like all these other people that we're all sitting here demanding that you do not cut? Because of, for who? Who are you trying to protect? Because quite honestly, I don't mind paying more. Because quite honestly, at the end of the day, if my kids don't have a music program, I'm still going to have to pay for them to play an instrument. So, I'm still going to have to pay. If I want my kids to play sports, I'm still going to have to pay. So, why are you sitting here having these crazy tax cuts when we're one of the biggest growing cities? What are you telling us? Quite honestly, I don't even know if I want to be in this city anymore. You're quite honestly kicking me out and my two kids, and what taste do I have in my mouth? What am I going to go home and say, "Oh, Portland's a great town. It's great, it's great, it's great." No, it's not. It's not. It's for the elite at this point. You're kicking out the lower-class people. You're kicking out the people who made this city great at one point. You're kicking out the people, quite honestly, who made it so all these other people from Connecticut, New York, with all this blue-bud money, come here. Because if it wasn't for us and our culture and our heritage, they wouldn't be here. They wouldn't be attracted to the arts. They wouldn't be attracted to the things that we provided before. But now, it's this notion, and quite honestly, it's kind of funny that you guys are going to cut the school system out of Cliff and Peaks Island. That's obvious. We all see that. We're not dumb. You cut up the school systems, you get rid of the low-income people, and then therefore you allow the elites to come in and buy up all the property. That's called gentrification. We've seen it before. And you guys are literally letting it happen again. It's shameful. You should all be, not, you shouldn't all be ashamed, I'm sorry, I don't mean it like that, but the budget cuts are very, very shameful, and it's a smack in the face to all of us. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sue Olafson. I'm president of the Portland Education Association, and I represent almost 900 teachers and ed techs in Portland Public Schools. And I want to say that I'm proud of this school district and the city. I know that you all care very much about educating our children and about being considerate of taxpayers. So, what is to be done when the state makes a conscious decision to shift the cost of education to cities? And the fact that even though our property valuation has gone up doesn't mean that the city has a lot more financial resources. How do we balance these two important interests? It's discouraging to learn that state funding to Portland schools is not only way down this year, but will continue to decline in future years. When we look at the progress that we've made in student achievement and toward upgrading our school buildings, it's troubling that a state decision can result in setting us back and in creating so much worry amongst parents, educators, and taxpayers. I encourage you to work with the city to create a multi-year plan to address school funding so that we don't have to go backwards. Please support as much of the superintendent's March 6 budget as you can. It is important for students. If school consolidation is still being contemplated, please allow time for that to be done in a deliberate and informed manner with educators and Portland residents. I want to express my thanks to the superintendent, to Alicia Gardner, and to the other central office staff who have worked tirelessly for many weeks to provide the board and the city with detailed budget analysis and comparative data to help you in your decision-making process. I know it's not going to be easy, but I know that you can do it. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Andy Jackson. I'm a husband and father of two kids right here on Peaks Island.
And his wife. Not his kids.
My wife, Mira, is here to support us also. Clearly, we are stakeholders in the Peaks Island School, and I just wanted to say that a chart flashed up briefly earlier comparing the cost per student at all the different schools. And at first glance, it looked like Peaks was an outlier, you know, more cost per student. But I just want to reiterate what all the other Peaks Island residents have said, which is that Peaks Island is a web. It's a network unlike any other neighborhood I've ever been in. And I've lived in lots of different places across the country. So, I invite you to consider how the guy that delivers our oil and fixes our boiler has two small kids in the school, the people that shovel snow, the people that work at the library. I could go, I could go on and on and on, but the island is a network in a way that if the young families don't have a place to live there, they're going to be forced to go. We would have to leave Peaks Island because there's no way we could manage that kind of commute. We'd have to go somewhere like Gorham or wherever. And if the young families leave, then the services slowly wither and die because they've been gutted. And so, I would just invite you, the next time you do an iteration of that chart, instead of doing cost per student, do cost per person affected in that neighborhood. And I think if you looked at the cost per person affected on Peaks Island, it'd be a lot lower than the cost per student because everybody's so connected on Peaks Island. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Matt Reading. I'm a Peaks Island resident. I'm here. And so, my son, this is actually my son's best friend right here. And my son is a future attendee of the Peaks Island School. And I've got to tell you, we moved to Peaks Island because it has a small-town feel and yet is still very much a part of Portland. And that combination speaks to us, being, you know, having, both my wife and I grew up in small towns. And so, that has a great deal of appeal. We moved to the island three and a half years ago and lived in a year-round apartment and bided our time until we could find a house that we could afford. Most homes are snapped up at a high price by, you know, wealthy folks from away who, you know, don't maintain a presence, don't participate in the community in a year-round fashion, and yet raise the value of homes, make it very difficult for people who want to be a part of the community to be a part of the community. So, we bided our time and we waited, and finally, we found a small home that, you know, obviously converted from a cottage a long time ago, and it's 117 years old. And, you know, so I see people out and they tell me, "Oh, my aunt lived in that house," you know, "and I had my first drink in that house." I used to sit by the fire and listen to the stories of the people who came before me. And the one thing that all these people have in common, I know because I've seen photos across, you know, various community locations on the island, is that they all went to the Peaks Island School. It just, life revolves around the brick school. You know, we go there, yeah. We go to Storytime there because the library's made its temporary home there. We go to the playground. We went to a concert dance. We go to the Lions Club, gets a, hires a Santa Claus, and gives presents to every single kid who lives on the island. It very much is a small-town feel. It's made harder living there by the fact that it is so expensive to buy a home that you can afford to live in and live a year-round life in Portland. And I'm sure that Peaks would be disproportionately hit by the combination of a revaluation and a tax rate increase. But I think that, you know, we all help each other out, even though it's a little more difficult to live there. We try to encourage other families to come live there. And if we don't have a school, that becomes impossible. And as Andy said, I think a lot of us would consider leaving because it's just untenable to live on an island without a school. We can't have families anymore. And if, there's a great David Foster Wallace quote, I don't know if anybody's fans of that, but talks about, you know, when enough outside things come in to enjoy the authentic character of a place, eventually they kill its authenticity. And, you know, I think we're okay dealing with the extra struggle. We take pride in the extra struggle of being islanders. But what we need is for Portland to not make it more difficult for us to do it. And if I stay up here much longer, I'm going to lose it, so. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Katrin. I work in the Portland District as an ed tech. I'm also a Portland voter. I live in the East Bayside neighborhood and I'm also an activist in this town. Last year, this city endorsed a $250 million waterfront project in the Old Port and raked in 10 million additional funds and increased excise taxes, $1.4 million in property taxes, and continues to receive $1 million per new building development that doesn't follow the inclusionary zoning ordinance laws. As I said, I live in the East Bayside neighborhood. I live next to the Kennedy Park housing projects. I watch the money come in every day and I have watched as it has pushed out some of the most vulnerable people in this city. I voted on the school bond. I voted to fix all four schools, including Presum Scott, which was listed earlier tonight as a possible closure. I watched in horror as the Parkland shootings occurred. I marched with our students and teachers on Saturday and I am reminded of a speech a student from Chicago gave on Saturday. And what he says, what he said was, "When you don't have school resources, you get gun violence. When you have underfunded schools, you get gun violence. When you have budget cuts, you get gun violence." So I want to know, why are we talking about consolidations for any schools at all? Increased ratios? Cuts to ELL programs? Closing Peaks Island schools? Cutting more positions? Cutting four schools? Adding pay-to-play sports? You said that if we wanted to get compliant with federal ratios, then we would need to add more teachers. Let's stop giving property management corporations cuts to their taxes and actually fining them for their in compliance and hire those teachers. Because Portland has the money. We need to be talking about shrinking ratios, increasing resources for students and teachers, increasing social workers. That is how you build safe schools and a vibrant community. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Hopkinson. I live at 9 Grafton Street. Instead of just continuing to talk for a long time, I would respectfully request four minutes instead of three minutes, if that is possible. Thank you. I'm not nervous. I'm pissed off. What an absolutely difficult position we find ourselves in. You specifically have been put through the wringer from every side of this. Even the national commentary on education has very little in the way of hope for community schools and incremental progress towards closing the gap, towards closing the education gap. For God's sake, even the Secretary of Education is unable to differentiate between common educational benchmarks, yet you are here. Thank you so much for your time and commitment, no matter how you feel about this budget. The original budget proposed by the superintendent should be passed with no cuts or concessions. As Councilor Jill Doosen put it, we are at a crossroads. There's a cliff on one side and a mountain on the other. And then there's you, trying to find the yellow line, trying to find what to cut. The budget isn't even representative of where we would want to spend a 9% tax increase if we had the luxury to do it. Instead, over 25% of the increase is headed to the collective bargaining agreement and pre-arranged wage increases and teacher benefits. Can we make a promise that this is the last year? We have to hear about cuts or concessions to the collective bargaining agreement? Can we finally say that taking money away from teachers is simply not a course of action we will ever consider again? Next, there's a $3.8 million shortfall from the state that was not expected, projected, or considered. To maintain the current level of education in Portland, you have to choose. Cut art, music, gym, international languages, crossing guards, and make kids pay to play sports. Seriously? We're receiving less money from the state because we have become more affluent. Property values have gone up in a large part to our arts and music scene. How does it make any sense to remove that from the next generation? Finally, you have a very small amount of incremental progress in school social work and mental preparedness. Even without the invention of the smartphone, our citizens have been dealing with more stress and more demand than ever before. Couple that with technology and apps aimed at young people and created intentionally to isolate and distract them, the mental condition of our school-aged children is in real danger. To think a social worker can work three days a week serving 350 children is absolute lunacy. The paperwork required for IEPs alone take this much time to be done in a manner that is effective for the child. What about the child of divorce that just needs some help getting through the next couple of weeks? Nothing. So how do we find the yellow line? Pass the superintendent's budget as written with no cuts or concessions. Get it to the city council. Get them on board. Get it to the voters and explain to them what happened. Tell them this is a revenue problem that we did not see coming and you need their help. Tell them you're committed to the Portland Promise and making the best school system in Maine. Then, get to work. It's time to fund education, not find cuts to make a budget work. Why not tax the soda that causes childhood obesity? Hold on. Double-sided it because I printed it and wanted to save a couple dollars on paper. Why not get our voices heard in Augusta and finally institute recreational marijuana and enjoy the tax revenue that that will bring to the city? Maybe these aren't the ideas you want to hear. That's fine. You get my point. Elected officials need to understand that we can no longer continue to raise taxes but that education is the cornerstone to our society and any movement backwards in this quest is simply not acceptable. You, we, need to immediately look at ways to increase revenue and not put a further burden on the community that lives here. If there is going to be a committee dedicated to closing and consolidating schools, there sure as hell better be a committee that looks at how to find the money for education. And let's face it, a lot of the monies needed are simply a replacement for money we used to receive from the state before we became one of the best places to live and vacation in the country. Thank you so much for your time and I appreciate your energy.
Good evening. My name is Todd Creashen. I live down on 1917 Washington Avenue. My daughter is a freshman student here at Casco Bay High School. I work in the central kitchen and I work also downstairs in the cafeteria here. So I've got some connections to the school district. I didn't go to Portland. I went to Gray New Gloucester. So, you know, I'm from the hinterlands. I'll just, I'll say something very brief. I can't believe that we're considering budget cuts in this economy, in this city right now. And I want to make it very clear that what budget cuts are doing is they're doing Governor LePage's work in Portland. They are doing exactly what he intended to have them do, which is you pit the jocks against the art students. You pit the islands against the mainland. You pit the kids who need to learn English against the kids who grew up speaking English. You pit the kids who like art against the kids who like music. You pit the teachers against the ed techs. You pitch the people like me who are working in the kitchen against the teachers, against the administrators. It is what the budget cuts from the state are designed to impose on the city. And if you pass budget cuts, you are simply doing LePage's work for him. And what it will mean is that I guarantee, my wife, I forgot the other connection, is my wife's a special ed teacher at Reiki. So this is, of course, you can all chalk this up to self-interest, but put it this way. I know from experience that if you pass these budget cuts, and even the superintendent's budget is already concessionary, if you pass the budget cuts, the teachers, the ed techs, the students, the staff are going to spend the next months looking over their shoulder, wondering who's going to get the axe. Instead of collaborating to give our kids the best education, if you want there to be more fights between kids because they're worried about their sports program or their after-school program, or their music, or their art being cut, or their ed tech being cut, if you want more conflict in the schools, if you want more grief in the schools, then pass the budget cuts. But if you want to be a true representative of education in Portland, then you have no choice but to take the heat. Sorry, you got elected to this position. That's your job to take the heat. I will, as people have said, I will say that, you know, it's a good thing to be an elected official and to stand up for education, but now that you've decided that you want to put yourself out there, you have no choice. And if you would rather not do that, it's simple. Resign. Get somebody else who will. Any idea of budget cuts in this instance, specifically against the most targeted communities, the multilingual center, the World Languages Program, that will simply pit student against student, teacher against ed tech, ed tech against staff. And it really is a very simple, clear choice, which you have to reject the cuts and you have to go to the voters and then you have to stick your necks out and fight for public education here in Portland.
I want to remind people, I just want to remind people to hold applause and to keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
I could use some applause, actually.
Oh.
Really, really. My name is Scott Elliott, 40 Glenwood Avenue. I had a question about the state's basis for the reductions in the state aid. Do you know what the equalized valuation numbers were that they used? I'm trying to put you on the spot.
That's okay. I'm going to pull it up right now, but I believe it's 8.25 billion.
Right. Because I'm also looking at a County of Cumberland report that was done that shows the valuations by town. And they're showing an 8.5 billion dollar number for 2017 and a $9 billion for 2018.
So it's a combination of the eight billion from '16 and the eight and a half from '17?
Yeah. My point is that, you know, the tax levy numbers that the city keeps using is based on a 7.8 billion dollar number. And they've been using almost, I mean, in 2014, they were using a number of almost 7.6 billion. So all these numbers are run on, I think, equalized valuation projections that don't reflect really any of the development that's been going on. And I think that sadly, you know, they're putting a squeeze on you guys and I think that you guys need to be a little more direct with the city because I don't think there needs to be any rate increase to absorb most of these expenditures by the school. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, Madam Chair, members of the school board. My name is Harlan Baker. I reside at 44 Mitten Street. I don't often come to school board meetings, but some of the things that are being proposed to be cut have brought me out to this meeting tonight. I want to focus my remarks only on a small portion of the budget. It is my understanding that the budget proposes to eliminate the chorus in the middle school and three positions of choir directors in the middle school. I think this is a terrible mistake. Music and the arts are a very important part of education and I am very concerned about those cuts and I hope you will reconsider and I will make my concerns known to the city council as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Derek Pierce. I'm principal at Casco Bay High School and also a proud Portland parent. First, I want to thank everybody here. I want to thank everybody there. As the kids have been chanting a lot recently, this is what democracy looks like. And I hope everybody's here at the city council meetings where it may be more mixed in the sentiments that our leaders are receiving. I encourage the school board to continue to advocate for our city's children, especially our most vulnerable. Recent events have underscored just how potent, wise, fragile, and crucial the next generation's voices are. I come tonight to speak on behalf of the superintendent's budget. I've lived in Portland for 25 years. I have one PPS graduate, another one in 10th grade. This is my 13th year in PPS and I have never been more confident in and proud of our school system's direction. Our teachers and administrators are energized by the district's commitment to not just traditional student achievement, but to addressing persistent inequities and supporting each child to become their best self. Our central office team has been marred by turnover in the recent past, but I can say unequivocally that this is the most talented, competent, and dedicated central office staff that we've ever assembled. In the upcoming budget, I urge the school board to stay the course and commit to fulfilling the Portland Promise. At Casco Bay, to speak about my own school for a little bit, we're on the path to sustainable excellence. After 13 years of hard, focused work, our faculty has never been so robust. Nine of our 13 original faculty members are still with us. Our student achievement continues to defy demographic expectations. Last year, our dropout rate was less than one-half of, or was in fact exactly, one-half of 1%. Our four-year graduation rate was the highest it's ever been, 93%. Our college acceptance rate continues to be among the highest in the state, about 98%. But more important than even our success on traditional measures is the quality and important work our students do to better the world. Next week, our sophomores will unveil their original podcasts, telling stories that need to be told about contemporary and historical issues of race in America. And a week from Saturday, our entire junior class will be heading to the Katan region for a week to listen and serve and document the stories of unsung, everyday heroes in that region. Along the way, we hope to help bridge the divide between the two mains. Right now, the supply and demand for Casco Bay High School is about right. We are full and have wait lists at Casco Bay, but about 90% of the eighth graders who want to get a spot at Casco Bay High School likely will by September, if not more. And the others will likely be offered a spot eventually. The vast majority of Portland Public School eighth graders and their families are still clearly attracted by the diverse and deep strengths of Portland Public Schools, other high schools, the great high schools of Deering and Portland, and for good reason. Over the last half dozen years, thanks to the support of the Nellie Maylie Foundation and the hard work of our high school teachers, each of the three high school options for Portland's families have gotten markedly stronger and more student-centered. We all know our students better and are figuring out ways to make our education as authentic and relevant as it is rigorous. Each school is pursuing distinct paths towards the same ends. Students who are prepared and empowered. Portland's high school choices are unique and keep families in the city. This needs to be preserved. Any move towards high school consolidation or some kind of school within a school model for any of the three high schools would be misguided, shortsighted, and could undo the powerful progress of recent years. At Casco Bay High School, we are happy to share a building with paths as our work is complimentary and our relationship is remarkably symbiotic. This would not be the case if Casco Bay High School, Deering High School, or Portland High School were to share a building. Damage to school culture and progress would soon overshadow any cost savings. In my 20 years as a school administrator, I've learned that the first key to school success and progress is unifying behind a clear and compelling vision and then working doggedly and purposefully to narrow the gap between that daily, between daily practice and our aspirations. The Portland Promise can be that beacon for Portland Public Schools. The second key is to keep excellent teachers and support staff happy. Happy, excellent staff catalyze happy, excellent students. Budget drama and existential insecurities about closings, consolidations, and layoffs can, of course, undermine both of these conditions for success. I implore the school board to support a budget that our children and our city deserve, which nudges us closer to fulfilling the truly moral imperatives of the Portland Promise. Thanks for your time.
Hi, I'm Kathy Markey Gerard, the assistant principal of Portland High School. And it always, following Derek is always interesting. So, as I'm standing there going, rookie mistake again. Anyway, I won't be as eloquent, but my purpose today is to just inform you. You have difficult choices. And as colleagues, my colleagues in this room, behind me, and parents, and the superintendent, we work hard and budget cuts, it cuts to our very core. And I know I've sat on many finance committee meetings and I know what you're up against. I know you're trying to make informed decisions. And so my purpose tonight is just to inform you of a very critical role that our SROs officers play in our schools. Now, I've heard people talk about it as a community resource, but it's much more than that. Our school resource officer...
The second key is to keep excellent teachers and support staff happy. Happy, excellent staff catalyze happy, excellent students. Budget drama and existential insecurities about closings, consolidations, and layoffs can, of course, undermine both of these conditions for success. I implore the school board to support a budget that our children and our city deserve, which nudges us closer to fulfilling the truly moral imperatives of the Portland Promise. Thanks for your time.
Hi, I'm Kathy Markey Gerard, the assistant principal of Portland High School. And it always, following Derek is always interesting. So, as I'm standing there going, rookie mistake again. Anyway, I won't be as eloquent, but my purpose today is to just inform you. You have difficult choices, and as colleagues, my colleagues in this room, behind me, and parents, and the superintendent, we work hard, and budget cuts, it cuts to our very core. And I know I've sat on many finance committee meetings, and I know what you're up against. I know you're trying to make informed decisions. And so my purpose tonight is just to inform you of a very critical role that our SROs, officers play in our schools. Now, I've heard people talk about it as a community resource, but it's much more than that. Our school resource officer, Officer Bennis for us, and Officer Black over at Deering, provide unbelievable amount of resources for our families, our communities, and in our schools. They help keep our schools safe, not only by monitoring, for at Portland High, we have probably at least a dozen exterior doors. We have cameras that monitor. We house a public clinic. We house adult ed. So people are coming and going, and we have an open campus, which for us, in our school culture and our community, has been an asset. Our kids are part of the Portland community, this 800, and as many of you saw, many of them responded on the protest day, they're very actively involved. So they represent us, and they're ambassadors. So that open culture and that open policy that we have really entails us helping keep them safe so they can have that opportunity. So Officer Bennis, who I work closely with, provides that kind of safety. But he provides more than that. He and I are firm believers in restorative practices, and as an administrative team, we look at opportunities to inform our kids, to educate us. He plays a critical role in that, in resources. He's caring, compassionate. He's walking the halls, and on every day, he's pointing out to me and to the administrative team, students that he feels that are struggling a bit, someone he saw in the hallway, kids that are gathering during certain times. He's a caring, compassionate officer, as well as an individual. And I think he is a liaison, an excellent liaison with the Portland Police Department. Many times, our kids, outside in the community, they don't know what to expect. We have many cultural differences, what to expect from policing. And I have to say that he provides that liaison. I've seen him at events, kids come up to him, say hi, they know him, they know him in our school community, they go and confide him on legal issues that they may be having, or worries that parents have about immigration status, and things that he can handle. And he does it in a truly caring and compassionate manner. So I want to put that out there. I also want to point to you that until you come over and see what that is every day, I mean, you talked about being over at Deering and being able to experience some of those things that you have to make decisions on, I encourage each and every one of you to come over to Portland High, Deering High, sit down with our school resource officer, talk to us, talk to Chief Sarchuk about things that, what are that school resource liaison provides for us. So I just put that out there, and I know you have a very difficult role, and very difficult. And I would encourage you that we all have the same goal, and that is to provide resources for our kids, and it breaks my heart, as I know it does yours, to hear about school closings and consolidation. And we are in a tough situation. So it's really important we all pull together, become informed decisions, help support one another as we go about our work of every day, providing for our students and the children of Portland. So thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing you over to Portland High.
Hi, my name is Rosie Lenahan. I live at 120 Noys Street. I have a second grader at Ocean Ave, and I will have a kindergartner there next year. I'm speaking tonight as a parent and also as an elementary school teacher, not in Portland. But first, I've taught in three districts, Cumberland, Yarmouth, and at an international school overseas. And I send my kids to Portland because it's the best. I mean, I just, I, you know, you hear all this great stuff about neighboring communities. Our schools are incredible. I could not be more proud to send my son to Portland. As an elementary school teacher, I just want to let everyone know that class size matters a ton. It seems like one or two more kids might not be that big a deal. It's a really big deal. I've been in classrooms where I started the year with 20, and I ended the year with 24, and it's really, really challenging. If I had started the year with 24, I don't even want to know what, you know, how much that would have impacted my relationship with those kids. This is a time, we all know, where we need to be getting to know our kids really well. We need to find the kids who, you know, are a little bit quieter, who have anxiety, who are struggling, who might have something going on at home. It's much harder to do that when you've got 25 kids in your classroom. So it might seem like, oh, we're at 21 now, it won't be a big deal to go to 23. It is a big deal, and I feel like once we make that choice, we can't go back. And that's my fear of these cuts. You don't, we're not going to get them back. Cutting Spanish, that's something that other districts aspire to have. In Yarmouth, they sent a group of teachers to Glastonbury, Connecticut, last year to look at their Spanish program in their elementary schools. They would love to put Spanish, and it's not even on the table because they can't afford it, and it hasn't been in the budget before. I believe they'll get there someday, but we have it now, and if we cut it, it's not going to come back. So I support the superintendent's original budget. I know there's problems with the cost. I know that there's projected costs to go up in the future, but we're going to have new leadership in Augusta. You know, the tides, I'm hopeful that things can turn, and if we've already cut out Spanish, it's not going to get reinstated. I just don't believe that's going to happen. So I want to support this budget. I believe the community will. And in the meantime, we need to go to Augusta, and we need to talk to the city about finding the money that we need to educate our kids in the best way possible. So I just, it pains me to think of us taking steps backward, as other people have said. You know, we're doing such good things. I've never taught in a school that had a full-time social worker, and I've taught in these great schools. Portland has social workers. It makes a huge difference. I, you know, I just, I can't say enough about how great our schools are, and to take step backwards is just a really painful thought. So I know you have a hard job, and I really think you need to advocate for our kids, and the city is going to have to do some hard work to figure out how to pay for it. This year, I think in the future, there's got to be money somewhere in the state for, given what Portland is providing to the state, I really think the money can be found. But in the meantime, cutting things that truly make us stand apart from other districts, I think is a really dangerous thing.
My name is Jean Handy. I live at 189 St. John Street, and I have a son who's been through the Portland schools since first grade. He went to Reiki, and then King, and he's currently a sophomore at Casco Bay, and his education has been nothing short of stellar. And we were drawn to this community because of the urban neighborhood schools. We were drawn to this community because of the amazing choice we have from three extraordinary and different high schools. It's an incredible model. I absolutely do not support school consolidation, and I absolutely do support the superintendent's first budget. I will pay more, happily, actually, happily pay more to sustain this model. The idea of cutting language, arts, and music, I don't understand how we can even consider it with all of the research that has proven how important those three things are and others to, in early education, not later education. So I hope that you'll join me in supporting his budget, and I agree with Ms. Marioni's suggestion that put it out to the people, let us vote for it, because we will. We will vote for it. It's a chance to lead in this. We're all in this situation together in the state right now. We can be leaders, or we can take 10 steps backwards, and I sincerely hope we don't do that. Thank you.
Hello, friends. My name is April Fornier. I am a parent of four children currently in Portland schools, two here are students at Casco Bay High School and two are students at Liseth Elementary School. I'm also an early childhood special educator, and to date, in the last four years, I have transitioned 300 and over 350 students into kindergarten here at Portland schools with special education plans. So this is my busiest time of year, as we get ready to transition these wonderful, beautiful little children who have very exceptional needs into your schools. And this is a very important time for Portland families as they look at these schools and they wonder, what is my future going to look like with my kindergarteners as these classes are big and my child has these exceptional needs, and I'm not really sure how they're going to fit into this school, or how they're going to work with these families, or how they're going to work with these other students. And we sit in these meetings, and they're just blown away by the teachers and the receptions and the principals and the special educators and the teams that are in these schools that welcome them, and they just feel so very accepted at these schools. I am very concerned about the kindergarten class sizes going up with these exceptional students being included in the mix. As we talk about this social-emotional component and whole student, we know that, you know, early intervention works, but it only works when you have enough supports in place. So the more, the more, or the more we take away from these teachers and the more students we put in the classroom, the more pressure we put on the teacher to try and hold it all together. And so it makes it very difficult to really serve this whole student. And then I believe that that starts to then roll forward as the child gets older, and then you start to see in the later elementary years, in the middle school years, in the high school years, you have the child that maybe didn't get as much support as they could have gotten in those early elementary years. And so I really believe if we're starting to look at increasing those class sizes in those very young ages, we're doing ourselves a disservice, where we could be adding more teachers, adding more ed techs, when we could be providing more supports. The other part that I also am very concerned about is I have a child who's currently at Liseth in fourth grade who has autism, and one of the reasons that he goes to school every day is for his specials. He does not like math, he does not like reading, but he loves gym, he loves library, he loves art and music, and very soon, he will be going to middle school, which is a lot of transitions. And if we start to take away all of those very special parts of his day, I'm very concerned. We just got, and were able to transition out his BHP. I'm worried that he will regress and need more support instead of being able to succeed out of needing that support if we start to take away those special things. So my mouth's getting dry, sorry.
You're also overtime, April.
Okay, thank you. I really support Javier's original proposal. I would really like to see that go to the taxpayers. Thank you so much for all of your work, really. It's a tremendous amount. Thank you, guys.
Me too.
Hi, I'm Tracy Zager. I live at 90 Prospect Street. I am a parent, and I'm also working with the schools. I went to the joint meeting the other night. I have not slept well since. I've been so angry about a few things. One, I was angry that I heard the superintendent be scolded, basically, by the counselors for framing this moment as the crossroads that it is, as if his framing was the problem and not the fact that we're at these crossroads. And that was incredibly insulting and demoralizing to me, and I'm sure to you.
No, I'm good.
The other thing, there was a comment made by a counselor who's not here tonight, which is a bummer, because I would like to talk to this person, who talked about resisting the urge to have shiny objects. It was said toward the very end of the meeting, that maybe we just need to resist this temptation to buy fancy things for our schools. He didn't say fancy, he said shiny objects. So I've been thinking about that, because the last time I worked, I, this year, we started having math coaches, thanks to your support, at the elementary level and the middle school level. They are all part-time interventionist coaches, some combination, and I support them part-time. So I meet with the coaches every month, and then I'm in all the schools to support them. So I have this wonderful perspective on the schools. The last time the coaches got together, we met at Reiki, and the coach at Reiki emailed me and said, we're meeting in the elevator room. One guess why it's called that, right? Because there's no place to meet. You can't have 15 adults meet at Reiki. So we go into the elevator room, we set up folding tables, we have trouble with the Wi-Fi because it doesn't work very well. The room is so small, I can't really project the video we're trying to show of a child counting. We're going to be headed into the classroom to study how children count and add in kindergarten, in first and second grade, and so I need to show them this video, and it's flashing because the Wi-Fi is intermittent. So I said, please don't have a seizure, right? And everyone put up with it, and we watched the videos, and then we headed into the classrooms. And before I know it, coaches are all over the floor with the children, listening to them count, listening to them add, investigating their thinking, recording what they were doing. We came back together, and we analyzed, and we talked about what this means, how does it help us understand the content, how does it help us make instructional decisions? This is the kind of work we're doing. We used paper, we used cubes, we used Ziploc bags I brought from my house, and we met in the elevator room. This is not a shiny object. There's nothing shiny about this. There's not even an object about this. This is the work that needs to happen. This is the work teachers want to be doing. When I got back to where I work in the afternoons, I got, checked my email, and all these teachers who had zoomed back to their schools, eaten lunch in their labs as they were driving or whatever, to go back to work where they have kids waiting for them, sent me emails saying, I love this, I'm going to try that, what do you think about this, and asking for support. Not one complaint about the elevator room, not one complaint about the Wi-Fi, because this is what teachers are used to. We do more with less on behalf of kids every day. That is what we do. We don't need thanks. We're not even asking for that much. We're just asking to not be so demoralized and to be valued. So I just want to end with a cautionary tale, because for the last six years, I've been coaching in an elementary school in New Hampshire part-time. This is my final year there, and we have built something beautiful. My teachers and my parents have gone from saying, I'm not really a math person, to, I've got to tell you what happened in maths today, and they're so excited and they love it. And the city, the town, has voted down the proposed budget year after year, and this year, half the teachers have decided to leave. So we are losing, and the principal. We are, they said, we've cut to the bone, we've cut to the bone, we've cut to the bone, the city did not fund it, and it's dying. I mean, it's, I've never seen anything like it. The teachers who are leaving are the ones with five to 15 years' experience, the kind of really essential cohort in a school to build institutional knowledge and growth and professional development. They've figured out management, they're trying to push themselves in their teaching, but they have to leave because they have young families and they have kids, and they say, how can I continue to work in a place that doesn't value me? So they're going to other districts, or they're leaving education altogether. So we built something beautiful, and it's ending this June. That happens. That actually happens. I think, I keep hearing this sort of, they'll figure it out, they'll find a way, they'll always find the money. But that doesn't always happen. If you cut, you cut. And finally, I just want to say, I'm reminded of the saying, when the trough is empty, the horses bite each other. And the, I hear outrage from this community tonight that we're in this situation that the trough is empty. At the joint meeting the other night, I didn't hear outrage about that, not enough outrage about that. I just heard biting of each other. And so if we could just take a step back, and I think you've gotten support from this all night long, to say, whoa, 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 why is this trough so empty? Can we look at that a little bit closer before we start tearing each other apart over the schools? Thanks so much.
Hello, my name is George Budago Makoko, and I'm originally from the Republic of the Congo, but I've been here for the last 15 years. I live here in Portland and have a house right near, not far from here, at 26 Bommer Street. And I've owned my house for the last 10 years, and every year, I pay more than $4,000 just for property tax. And I like the way they do, they divide them into the bricks or lines of the budget, and school is one of them. And I'm shocked to hear that we are here discussing about cutting the budget for school, something that I can't even begin to think. When a friend of mine called me tonight and said that there's this meeting, and I said I cannot miss to be here, so I have to be here. And one thing that shocked me, when I was reading online and looking how US grades in terms of, do, anybody knows about the program for international student assessment? Anybody know about that? It's a program where they compare all nations, and they try to assess the performance of students. And if you look at these studies online, you can Google that, US is ranking, in 2015, it ranked 38 out of 71 countries. And when they are doing the assessment, they do the math, readings... of 71 countries. And when they are doing the assessment, they do the math, readings, science, and the other skills. And let me tell you, the first one, if you look at 2015, is the Singapore, and the US is way, way down. Even Vietnam comes before US. Singapore, Taiwan, and all those countries come before US. Now, we are sitting here into one of the super, you know, superpower country, and we're discussing about cutting the budget for students. For me, it shocks me, and I tremble, because I can see, if you ever read the history of countries that have declined in history, what they did was, they were cutting the budget into the schools this season and increasing into military spending and all that. And that's what we're discussing tonight, cutting the budget for students. I have my 10-year-old, almost 10, and six, and I worry about their future. And one of the things that scares me the most is the school, how educated I'm going to be, because I consider myself as international or global citizen. Our kids, soon, they are going to compete with students from China, from Singapore, from Norway, from other nations, Ghana and the other countries. Really, do we want to be behind the other nations and spend more into the military and cut school budgets? I'm worried about this. And I hope you understand the, you know, the task at hand, and deal with it accordingly. And I thank you so much.
Good evening. Good evening. I want to thank Superintendent Botana for all of his hard work. He put together a budget.
I'm sorry, could you start with your name?
Christine Albert, Hartley Street. He put together a budget that Portland can be proud of, a budget that supports programs, a budget that supports staff, a budget that supports families and children. I want to speak to you tonight in my two different roles. First, I want to speak to you as an educator. I'm an elementary school teacher in a neighboring district, just like Mrs. Nolt, which never passes its budget, not the first time, the second time, or the third time. We started this year without a school budget, and I anticipate that we'll go most of next year without a school budget. The impact that this has on teachers and students is very significant. It is demoralizing to believe that the citizens in the community where you are teaching, their children couldn't be bothered to care about the school and supporting the budget. So I have been teaching for 12 years. I've taught in two different districts. I went through budget cuts about 10 years ago in my first district, and I was riffed as a new teacher, and got my job at this neighboring town that can't pass the budget. So that's really fun right now. And it's just not pretty when that sort of thing happens. I did my student teaching here in Portland at Presumscott Elementary School. It was an amazing experience. I taught in a first-grade classroom, and I have to tell you, it was terrifying. I felt like Gulliver. There were about 17 kids in the room, and I thought at any moment they were going to stake me to the floor. So the thought of having 23 of them in a room who can't zip up their own pants, remove clothing, any of it, that makes them uncomfortable or hot, these are things that happen in elementary school classrooms. They happen all the time. And you have to manage that. When you have 23 kids in front of you and you're managing all of that and teaching them about what it means to be a member of a community, to build a relationship, to understand who they are, what their background is, that maybe you should deal with this in the school, and maybe calling home might not be such a good idea for this particular child, that you could do more good at school with this particular child. When you increase class sizes, you impact a teacher's ability to build community, to understand their students, and to understand their families. Currently, I'm teaching 4th grade, and I will tell you that I team teach with a partner, and we have separated out our math students, and she has kids who are lower achieving, and I made sure to take the more, the larger number of kids. I have 25 students in my math class. It is not manageable. Those kids are not getting the best Mrs. Albert every day for math, and it is painful for me. I can't get to the really high flyers. They don't get what they need from me, because you know what? They're going to be okay. So you teach to the middle. That's not something for us to aspire to. That's not part of best practices. So class size does matter. We need to be bringing class sizes down, not increasing class sizes. We need to build small communities within our classrooms. You need to not be looking at these big numbers, 25 kids in a classroom. Where are you going to get the desks? Oh, wait, we're getting rid of teachers. We'll just pull them out of their rooms. So we have overcrowded schools, and now we're going to have overcrowded classrooms. That's not okay with me, and it shouldn't be okay with the finance committee. It's not okay with most of the people who are here. I want to speak to you as a parent.
Ma'am.
Can I have an extension?
Do you have a?
Thank you. I want to speak to you as a parent of a 5th grader, who you've heard me talk about before. She's not a big fan of school. She doesn't really like it. She doesn't like math. She doesn't like reading. She does not like writing. She loves her school nurse. She loves her principal. She loves her music teacher. And as we're thinking about my 5th grader going to middle school, the one question we keep asking is, "What does the music program at the middle school look like?" And now, you're telling me that the music program at the middle school looks like nothing. This is a kid who I already pay for private classes for. This is who she is. This is what drives her to go to school. "It's music day, and I'm excited. I'm going to school." It's strings. "I get to play strings today." I was invited to the orchestra at the middle school as a 5th grader. "I'm so excited. I'm going to go." This is who she is. And the fact that she's not being supported in this budget as a learner is really, really painful for me. And I'm sure it's painful for a lot of families in this room who are in similar situations. Arts in the school is the reason that lots of kids attend school. Lastly, I want to speak to the SROs, and I'll just give you a little glimpse as to what the SRO at the school that I teach at does. I have recess duty, well, not currently, because I have a broken foot, but I have recess duty normally. And recess justice is something to behold. And nobody comes out of it with a smile on their face. So as I come into the cafeteria, Officer Pellerin is always there. So if I come into the cafeteria with a child who just had an incident at recess, that may seem minor to most people. It was huge in this kid's life. He immediately looked at this child, said, "Chris, what is going on?" I gave him a brief rundown, and he went and had lunch with this little boy, and sat and talked to him. And every day, he visits him in his classroom, because that's part of what school resource officers do. They're not just there to protect the doors. They're not just there for safety in a physical way. They're there also for the emotional safety of our students. I urge you to put forward the superintendent's original budget and bring it to City Council, and build momentum, and stand up for it, because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Hi, John Thibodeau, 114 Clinton Street. Thank you for all the hard work you're doing, first of all. And I know you get paid a lot to do this, so. And thank you for all the listening to. As a therapist, I have some appreciation for listening for hours on end. So with that said, I strongly support the superintendent's original budget, and I strongly oppose the cuts that some on this committee are advocating for. I'm not a parent, but when I think about Portland, I think about this city. I think about what is most important about this city, about any city that you live in. I'm really proud to live here. I reflect on this city, and I have a hard time thinking of anything more important than education, really, right? I mean, what is more important than education? It should be the highest priority, I think, of any aspiring city, good city. And I have to say, I'm disappointed with the approach of this committee. I feel like it's been preoccupied with voices in City Hall. I feel like it's been predicated and focused on taxes and not focused on the quality of education. The superintendent referenced Indiana where he came from. These sorts of qualities remind me of somewhere like Indiana. It does not sound like Portland, Maine, to me at all. I think of Portland, Maine, as one of the most liberal and progressive cities in the country. It's a thriving city. We're Portland. We're not Indiana. Despite this, I've heard voices here on this committee and at City Hall last year inferring and even sometimes stating that there was this silent majority that do not want to invest in our schools and increase taxes. That was what was echoed time and time again at City Hall all throughout last year. When it finally came to a vote last year, there was no silent majority. There was a vocal majority, 65%. I think it's pretty clear what kind of city we live in, what kind of values we have, and education is one of them. And we need to start acting like it. Quick reframe here. This is about priorities, what kind of city we want to be. This morning in the Press Herald, there was an article about the Midtown Project. Quick quote, "Portland, meanwhile, received $8.2 million in federal loans to help finance this project. The city has so far transferred nearly $1 million of those funds to Federated to cover permitting and design costs, and has paid more than $252,000 in interest on those loans. Portland could be forced to repay the loan if the land is not developed in a way that creates jobs." This sounds like a city that bends over backwards for development, high-end development that we see all over the city. At the same time, we're looking to cut and hollow out our education system. Another quick thing in the Press Herald, there was a terrific article a couple weeks ago that really just did a comprehensive overview, and I was really struck by a number here. The number was in 2005, that the school portion of the tax rate was $13.92, what the superintendent is proposing is $11.60. Just think about that. 13 years ago, we're talking about $13.92, and now we're talking about $11.60 as if, you know, it's this crazy figure. I think we need to have some perspective, historical perspective, but also, again, what kind of city we are, what kind of city we should be. Lastly, I would say, I believe it's your job on this committee and as a school board to be advocating for our education. You have heard it here. Democracy works. This is what you're seeing. There is no silent majority. There's a vocal majority. They're here. They're going to be here. They're going to come back. You need to listen, and I believe you need to lead. Go to City Hall, not meekly, but boldly, and advocate for the type of educational system we deserve. I ask you to do that and support the superintendent's budget.
All right.
Hello, my name is Jen Boggs. I live at Edgeworth Avenue, and I'll be brief. I wasn't going to come tonight, and then I wasn't going to stay so long, and then I wasn't going to say anything. But hearing everyone's point of view has moved me to speak. And the fact that I have a 2nd grader at Longfellow School. In addition to that, I'm a small business owner in Portland. And it's for those two reasons that I believe that Superintendent Botana, your original budget should be the one that's presented. I heard you say a couple times that the new budget with the cuts is not your budget. I think you might find that if you put out your original budget, if the City Council puts out your original budget, that it might be our original budget, or our budget, the one that we want. Just putting that out there. So despite the fact, sir, that you have called my house way too many times early in the morning this year, I want to add my voice to your support, to the support of that budget. And I'll just close by saying that I love Portland. I love this town, and I look at the Portland Promise, and I think, yeah, that's why I want to live here. And I think others might look at the values held in that promise and decide that's why they might want to live here, too. And I just beg you, please, let's not make that marketing. Let's make that a real thing. I mean, a 2nd grader can tell you what a promise is. So I'll close with that. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, how many people are also going to be testifying after Lisa? Okay, just wanted to make sure that we had a sense of...
Long night. Hi, this is, my name is Lisa Penyelver. I live on Peaks Island, 14 Upper A Street. I have a 17-year-old at Casco Bay High. She started in the Peaks Island School. She actually was preschool there, but then she started in kindergarten, and she's gone all the way through. She went to King Middle School. My sister teaches at King Middle School in 8th grade science. I think this really is about values and priorities, and I know that Mr. Botana has, this is a very difficult position, but I think you have to stand your ground. Portland is an amazing place, and many of us are here because we've wanted to raise our children here. And more people are coming all the time because they want to raise their children here. Our school system has value added. It isn't just about numbers. It is actually one of the very powerful selling points of this community. And if this City Council, who seems so very obsessed with numbers, wants to support the growth and economic strength of this city, they absolutely have to support the schools and the growing workforce and expanding the schools so that we can keep up with the rest of the world, as was pointed out. Values are not something you have. They're something you do. And I hope that you can understand that, I mean, I know you understand it, but when you educate children, there's a ripple effect. Their children are educated. They educate those around them. And also, the way, you know, the economic, the gap between the wealthy and the less wealthy can be diminished by the power of education. So I don't think this is something we can compromise on, really. I think the city has the money, and they need to find it somewhere else. So that's it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Dana, and I don't have anything prepared, but I've been sitting here since 6 o'clock, listening, and I thought I needed to at least stand up and introduce myself. And we live at Danforth Street in Portland. We own businesses in Portland. We have two children, one at King Middle School and one at Portland High School. And we are 100% committed to the Portland city and the school district. And I'm here tonight to encourage you all to be more visionary. Portland is on the map. Portland is exploding. People are moving from all over the world to be here. And we can have the best school district in the whole state. We can be, you know, we can be high in the country. We shouldn't be talking about cuts. We shouldn't be looking at ways of, like, eliminating programs. We need to have a bigger vision for where we are and what our kids need, and that's why I'm here tonight.
Hi, I'm Travis Emery. I live at 313 Dearing Avenue. I have two kids at Ocean Avenue. My daughter's in 3rd grade there, went to East End School before that, and our experience with both schools has been fantastic. And I am, I'm standing here right now as a strong advocate for the original budget. I, you know, I've not buried myself in the minutia of school budgeting in the past, but I went back and looked at the budget that was proposed and saw some of the, some of the historic numbers, historical numbers for mill rates and for tax levies and for, and for how our district and the quality of education compares to not just our neighbors that we hear a lot about, which I think it compares very, very well with them, but with the country. lot about, which I think it compares very, very, very well with them, but with the country and with, and with the world. You know, you've heard tonight that people, people are here and they, and they look not just over their shoulder or over the, over the, over the border at Falmouth and at Cape and these other schools nearby, but they see their kids as getting ready to compete in the world and getting ready to be themselves in the world. And I think that, you know, as we talk about, as we talk about eliminating these programs and we talk about these really difficult decisions, we're talking about eliminating the pieces of school that, that serve parts of our community, that, that serve parts of our children's personalities, that, that really we can't afford to neglect, right? It's really hard for me to imagine going and saying to someone who asks, so what happened in Portland, you know, what happened to the schools? I can't believe your kids don't have art, music resources. And for me to say, well, you know, we, we decided not to really, not to really ask for them, you know? I think, I think the least that we can do is to, is to stand up and, and advocate on our children's behalf, on the, on our community's behalf, on our future's behalf, and, and let people know that, let the voters know that we believe in them, that we believe that they can make the right decision, right? I'm standing here because I, I think that Javier Botana probably knows, I'm really confident about this, that he knows more about education and, and supporting education than I do. And that, and that his budget, his budget will do more to serve the future of our community than, than, than my input here will, will, will. And, and I think that if the voter in Portland, if the voter in Portland understands that what they're really deciding to do is to give the best to our children, we need to understand that, that they're going to support that. And please, believe in the voter. Give them a choice that they can, that they can actually be proud of, you know? I don't want to go and say yes to something I don't want or say no to something and, and also hate that choice, right? I want to have a choice that I can, that I can be proud of when I go in to cast that vote. So, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else besides Steve? Okay, go ahead.
Steven Sharp of Cumberland Avenue. I suspect you long for the days when only I, Michael Nicolai, show up for these budget hearings and present opposing view. Michael didn't show up tonight, maybe because it's not in town that you're meeting. Some of the information that has been left out, especially tonight, is that enrollment is still declining. It's not declining by much, but it's every year we still see declines in enrollment. And yet, we're asking the taxpayers to fund a larger share of the budget. Eight percent increase is, or, you know, eight or nine percent increase is, is really an astronomical increase for any one year. I don't think I've ever heard any school district in the region look for an eight or nine percent increase. It's just, they just wouldn't even think that it was a possibility for that to pass. So it just blows my mind that, that that was even being considered. I also need to point out, these are not cuts to the budget. The budget currently is about $106 million. The next, the dollar figure that he proposed was $113 million. What he's proposing is a reduction of about three, I can't, 3.5 million, I think? 3.7 million to his proposed increase. So that's all he's asking for, is, that's, that's what this proposal essentially in front of you now is, is a reduction to the increase. I don't think the City Council is going to accept the 4.5 percent increase. I suspect they're going to want to push you back to the 2.5 percent increase that you've been looking at for the last several years. I, I really think you're going to get pushed back at this larger budget. I don't think, I, oh, I'm almost certain they will not accept an eight or nine percent increase. They're just not, you know, that's just not going to happen in this city. One piece of information I need to make clear, the speaker just spoke to the 1392 tax rate 15 years ago and referred to it as, like, that we used to spend more, and that was based on a different valuation. We reevaluated in 2006 and '07, and your tax rates went down because reevaluation affected the structure of the tax rate. It didn't affect how much people were paying for schools. We actually probably spend double that in tax revenue for schools than we did 10 years ago. I would have to go look at the exact numbers, but it's...
22 percent.
22 percent? Okay, than 10 years ago? It's, it's significantly over what we had. I think school consolidation is achievable this year in the elementary school, in the mainland, excuse me, in the mainland elementary schools. I fully support the closing of Peaks and definitely closing of Cliff Island. I think Cliff Island will close itself. With only two kids in this Cliff Island, it will close itself just by the mere fact that I don't think families will want to, unless they just want a publicly funded, financed homeschooling, and that's what they're getting, is publicly financed homeschooling, essentially, with just two kids there. But I believe that...
Sharp, you're over your time. Do you wish to have an extension?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I believe that you could definitely do consolidation in the mainland, and you, the information presented is, actually presents hall at 500 when it's being built to hold 565 students. I'm not sure...
548.
548. And I think that you could find enough room in all the schools to handle the, the need for consolidation of, and close presumptuous, and find significant savings there. That's basically all I have for tonight, and I just want to encourage you to move forward and present a school budget that is acceptable to the City Council and to the taxpayers of Portland.
All right, so we are going to close public comment. And we don't have it on the agenda, but I just wanted to let the public know that we do, the Finance Committee has another meeting on Friday where we will continue the discussion and deliberation on the budget. And I just wanted to check in with my colleagues one last time to see if there's any additional requests for more information or follow-up questions for staff to prepare for, for Friday. And Sarah, you have a question?
I just have a que, yeah, I do have a question. I'm not going to make a statement. I'm just wondering what advertising we've done about Friday, that the Finance Committee is voting on Friday? Has that been out and about? Plenty? Okay. I just didn't know how much...
But I know that I saw, I was looking today, and we do have, I think we need to be careful because we've got several places where some of the schedules appear...
Right.
And not all of them have been synced. So that you can go, if you end up in one place, it said we were voting tonight.
Yeah.
If you ended up in another place, it accurately described this.
I just want to make sure that people know that...
We've been redundant, but we're not alarmed.
Right. I just want to make sure it's clear that you guys are voting on Friday, that's all. Thank you.
Well, and that's also subject to the committee, if, based on what information you need the public has engaged, and they will continue, you know, on Friday. If there is going to be an action, there will be a public comment period. My colleagues feel that there's enough information for a proposal to be voted on on Friday. If not, what additional information that's requested, additional meetings that we need to do to get to a place where we can vote a budget out of this committee? And so I'm putting that out there to my colleagues on the Finance Committee. Roberto?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you just go over the time and the location of that meeting again?
So the meeting is Friday at District Offices at 5:30, I believe, was our plan, and it's going to be in Room 234, where we've had our past meetings at District Office.
And we may, if you wish, we may want to move it here. You know, obviously, we can't accommodate a crowd like the one that we had today at the District Office, so we would be, you know, we would be happy to do that. We also have the advantage of being able to broadcast from here that we cannot do at the District Office, so...
Can we decide on that right now? I think I'd rather have it here.
Yeah, I think that this worked out well in terms of parking and being able to access the building. Okay, so we will make sure that that's...
Let me ask Principal Pierce, there isn't a dance on Friday or anything like that?
Oh, yeah, we should...
Oh, he's definitely coming, huh?
It's a little, we'll work out. We have, we have an event that's, I'm not quite sure if it's confirmed here, but we'll figure it out. We can use the library, worst case. We've got a large building here. We can figure it out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess the question on the table is additional information, additional requests. How much time do you think you need? Are we ready to vote on Friday?
I know I made an information request. I'd like that prior to Friday's meeting, because it's hard when, when we get a stack like this on top of the stack we've already got. It doesn't give us any time to really sit down and synthesize and look at it.
And that's, the request is just the information on what is new still in the budget?
Yes.
Okay. No problem.
Once we get that, I'm ready to vote. Oh, yeah, I've been ready. Thank you.
I still have more information I need to see before I know if I'm ready to vote.
And, but once you get that, if you get that by Friday...
By tomorrow. If I get it by Friday, I don't have time to look at it.
I'm sorry.
That's the point.
Look at it tomorrow.
I get it tomorrow. That gives me a shot at it, but I've got two other meetings for the school. I actually think that the Board should be thinking about perhaps extending its time and, because I believe it is important to craft a budget that has, that can be accepted by City Council. I think otherwise, we risk having, sending a budget to City Council and having it sent back potentially at a lower rate than what we might be able to present and actually lobby through. And that we'll spend more time after the fact and cutting in response to whatever they send us, the message they send us. So I'd prefer to spend more time and, and really work hard, because we haven't had a chance to work. We've spent most of our time in, in having people in presentations and in public hearing. We haven't actually sat around and said, what can you live with, what can you live with, what can you live with, except once. And we haven't worked this budget and really gone, you know, what it, what, but if my colleagues are not interested in sending the City Council a budget that will pass, the City Council, then it probably doesn't matter. We can vote it out and send it, and they'll send it back, is my real concern. And that, as Ms. Thompson said earlier, that's a return to the budgeting of the past, and I really would hate to see that happen. So I think it depends on what our long-term plan is. Do we want to do our work here, or do we just sort of throw up our arms and say, because I think the City Council's been pretty clear about where they stand? And we can push back, but ultimately, they have the power to send it back to us. So that's my thinking at this point. You know, it may be that my colleagues are not interested in really working this budget and trying to figure out how to craft something that can get both committee support and Board support and Council support. And as I say, in that case, you can just vote it. But I'd prefer to do our work. I think that's why we're here. We are here to advocate for children, and I'm, I'm very disturbed by the implication that not supporting this budget means you don't support children or education or adult students, because we all do. But we also, and we didn't hear from another demographic of people who live in our community for whom the tax increase would be life-changing, and particularly if it continues year after year. And I think the Council made it very clear the other night that they want to see a long-term plan. They might have an appetite for a higher number this year if there's a real plan about how we have a sustainable budget going out. They are not interested in seeing a multi-year budget plan that runs up to $133 million in five years.
Did the Council give you guys a number the other night?
No, no.
Did they publicly announce something?
No, they did talk about, and I don't know if they came to a number in their goal-setting meeting. I was watching some of it, but I didn't, I didn't, I caught parts of that meeting, but I didn't catch the whole thing. So I don't know. I know that they, at the time I was listening, were talking about a 2.5 for them. Yeah. So...
The City Manager had a different input.
Yeah. As I say, I only saw part of it, so I don't know, but anyone can go online and watch their conversation about the needs, the, the things that they're trying to manage and weigh, because schools are part of a community. And we have to balance those. We've heard from a very, and I would have been, when I was, when my kids were young, I would have been in this audience and advocating just as strongly. I did. I was president of the PTO. I came to meetings. I pushed really hard. As a parent, looking back, sometimes I advocated for things that actually did not really matter in the education of my kids. And my kids are very successful, all three of them, very different experiences in Portland Public Schools. It wasn't about money. It was about the relationships they had with people. And so, yeah, I'm getting off of whether or not to vote, but that's where I am. And I'm hoping that we're going to try and come and have a collegial conversation, that we bring ourselves together and assume that we are all interested in providing the best schools possible within the resources that are available to us. I wish there were a lot more, but some of these issues really are at, are at the state level and the national level. We're stuck having to figure out how to apportion what we've got in our, available to us.
So I hear that we have a majority of the Finance Committee that feels prepared to vote on Friday with the additional information that Javier will, Superintendent Botana will be sending out tomorrow morning. We will make sure that the, the location change for Friday at 5:30 here at PADD's Casco Bay High School is posted and updated, and we will look forward to continuing this discussion and reviewing the updated changes and talk about what we, and begin to debate on the proposals in front of us. So, thank you very much, and have a good night.